Order. And if you guys don't mind, I'm just going to move my windows around here. Bear with me. Okay. So we have no citizens comments tonight. Oh, I must forgot to pledge allegiance. So let's pledge allegiance to the flag, everybody, if you would just mute and follow along with me. We can do that. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. And like I said, there are no citizens comments. So moving right along. We can head over to the consent agenda vote, and I would turn to Mr. Horish. Would you like to make a motion?
I would love to move to approve the consent agenda of March 23rd, 2022, continuing the meeting minutes of March 9th, 2022, and the warrants of March 25th, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Rich. Any discussion? Seeing none, take the roll. I vote yes. Joe?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And the screens jumped on me. Rich, did I get you? To new business, we have the superintendent formative evaluation training that the Personnel Subcommittee is prepared to provide, which will then get us all ready for the superintendent's entry plan presentation. So Alita, would you like to share it, or would you like me to?
Whatever you prefer.
Yeah, but Leah, your audio is going out in and out a little bit.
Can you? Is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I think it's my microphone is right where my hand rests for my mouse. So everybody, Mary and I have a little something for you today, and that is just a primer for this stage of the superintendent evaluation cycle that is called the formative assessment. It's basically the mid-cycle review to determine what progress Kirk is making on the goals that he laid out at the beginning of the cycle, which was ultimately October, November. So some of this is review, and some of it will be somewhat new for you all, especially if you've never gone through this process before. So the superintendent evaluation cycle has five steps. As you guys know, we have already had Kirk go through the self-assessment and the goal setting. He has, for the last many months, been implementing the plan that he established. And it is now time for the next stage of the process, which is the formative assessment. You'll recall that this is happening just a little bit later than it normally would, simply because we went through the new, the hiring of a new superintendent, which put us a little bit back. Normally, this would be done in January or February, and that's hopefully when we would do it in the future. So in the survey that we conducted for the committee in October of 2021, this particular graph is relevant for our work today. We asked the committee if they knew what the mid-cycle assessment versus the end-of-cycle assessment was all about, and you know, seven out of 11 said yes, they had a firm grasp on it. But four of us who are probably new to the committee, although we don't know who said what, are perhaps needing a little bit more explanation on this. And that is where Mary is going to pick up and help us understand a little bit more.
Okay, thanks, Leah. So in the formative assessment, as we've talked about before, the superintendent doesn't have to have a written report or a PowerPoint, anything like that. It could be a discussion where he presents the evidence. So he has been collecting, and this is the time to share the evidence. So it's also our time to dialogue and talk about, at our time as school committee, to dialogue and to assess the evidence. And in accordance with DSE, the three types of evidence required, multiple measures of student learning growth and achievement, judgments based on observations and artifacts of professional practice, including observations of practice, and additional evidence relevant to one or more performance standards, including if it's relevant feedback from staff. We can go on to the next one. So superintendent prepares the progress report and synthesizes the information, prepares an assessment on the goals, and presents it to us. And this is done as we work together with the superintendent in public meeting, and here we are doing that. And we discussed the report and the evidence, and our part is to share any relevant feedback, develop an understanding of the progress being made on each goal, and achieve agreement on what, if any, mid-course adjustments are needed. So let me just note, too, that because one of Kirk's goals is actually, you know, the strategic plan, we know that we have lots more to look forward to as he presents than what might be a typical presentation by the superintendent for the formative assessment. As Leah said, this would usually take place January, February at the latest, but we're on a different cycle. And I'm very happy that Kirk is our superintendent. And it makes a lot of sense that since he was able to complete his, the strategic plan, that that be presented. So it's not that it's necessary in lieu of the formative assessment, but the formative assessment evidence is encompassed there. And Kirk will point out the places to us as we go through it tonight. But this is just to say that this is usually the midpoint and formative, still in formation, looking forward to what will be the summative, and even more evidence, and wrapping everything up, which Kirk will do for us later on. So back to Leah.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Just a very quick clarification that it's not the strategic plan, but the entry plan that Kirk is.
Entry. Sorry. Sorry. Yes, thank you.
No worries. The strategic plan is a much bigger animal.
Yes, and it's coming later. Yeah.
So guys, we built this timeline for you just to give you an understanding of how condensed the schedule actually is. So on May 4th, Kirk is going to be, or he's on the planning calendar right now, to present his final summative evaluation, or we will conduct his summative evaluation on the presentation that he gives on May 4th. By May 11th each, let me back up. At the April 6th meeting, Dorothy Presser is going to join us and provide a more comprehensive training on the summative evaluation process, the tool that we'll use to conduct the evaluation, and how we go about doing these reports, completing these reports. So we will get more training at our meeting in April. Then on May 4th, Kirk will conduct his final presentation on all that he has accomplished, all of the progress that he's made toward those goals, and up against all of the standards of professional practice. On May 11th, each school committee member will submit to the Personnel Subcommittee their individual summative assessment report of the superintendent's performance. During the next five days, from May 11th to May 15th, the chairperson or her designee will review the individual reports and then write a synthesized version of the summative evaluation, basically bringing together all of the points of view of the committee members, the 11 committee members. And so that will be done in isolation, and therefore is not open deliberation by a form of the committee. But whatever synthesized report is built by the chair or the chair's designee needs to be accepted by the school committee. So that will go into the meeting materials for the May 18th meeting. And then on the May 18th meeting, we will vote on that synthesized report. And as you know, that is after the Bolton and Lancaster, I believe, elections. So there may need to be some conversation about, you know, how able or capable our new members feel about voting for this, and whether or not they should abstain, that sort of thing. We can have that conversation later. So the one thing that I just wanted to scroll back here on for you guys is that we did link Kirk superintendent goals in here, so you can reference those tonight as he's presenting, if you wanted to kind of compare what he's showing us he's done to what he said he would do. And so I'm going to stop sharing.
And so Leah, if I can just add that one last task in our goals as Personnel Subcommittee is to, with your indulgence, to send out the survey again. And then we'll, so we've got a baseline we did at the beginning, and we have sort of at the midpoint, we took it again. And then following Dorothy Presser's presentation on summative, we would ask you that you would just fill it out one more time, and then we have those three data points to be able to share and to fulfill our goal.
Thanks, Mary. Does anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask about this before Kirk gets underway? Yeah, Mike?
So first, thanks to both of you for putting this together. This is dynamite. This is really helpful. So thank you. So two questions. I'll ask them together, and then I'll just mute myself and have you answer if you can. The first question is, other than availability through an FOI request, how will these documents be made public, if at all? In other words, will they be posted somewhere? Or will they only be viewable if a request is made? And the second question is, historically, I've always wondered how we can ensure that the synthesized version is reflective of all of the individual summative assessments. So I wonder if you can share what steps will be taken in order to make sure that this is as objective a process as possible, rather than as subjective a process?
So it is required by law that all of the individual reports are posted as meeting materials. And so you all will not only see the synthesized version in the meeting materials, but all of the individual reports as well.
Terrific.
Yeah. I think I got both the questions there.
So I'm just curious, has that happened in the past as well?
I cannot remember, although I think so, but I cannot be sure.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I can pick that up. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, but it does, those are all public documents. Any other questions? All right, my friends. I'm going to admit Dan, and then we're gonna keep moving. So without further, I introduce Superintendent Downing to provide us with his long-awaited entry plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. And I have my glass of water here as I anticipate I'll mute it throughout the presentation, so forgive those pauses. One other thing to add to Dr. McCarthy's description of this process is that it being formative, it is always best practice in formative meetings to share with the person you're evaluating. If there are some things, some gap this year, you could forward those requests to the chair, and Lee and I will address any of those in our weekly planning sessions. And in regard to those weekly planning sessions today, we had one of our meetings today. And this is a very interesting day for all of us. In one way, it feels like the final day of my interview process, or you might say it's the last day of the beginning. Whatever it is, I think, you know, all the hard work that's come up to this day, I've been extremely excited about. And I just, I want to offer all of my gratitudes to, first and foremost, our community, my team, the teachers, the educators, and you, our school committee, for engaging in many conversations with me over the course of the last nine months to ultimately get to this, to this report. So with that stated, I don't want anyone here to be frightened by 79 slides. I'm sure that that may raise some concerns for some. As you know, Dr. McGuire and I love to have some friendly competitions, and I've assured him that we can complete this report within an hour. So that being said, let me share my screen, get my technology aligned. I'm picking up feedback. Is that me? Sound check, check, check. Alita, can you confirm I'm okay?
You're good.
Yep, you're good. No feedback.
Okay, and I gotta do this, and let me set my timer so we can begin. So again, I want to thank you for this evening, and let's get started. So entry findings. The way I crafted this report, and I gave you a pretty dense report about all these categories. So I'm not going to be going just in reading through the report or reading through these slides. Rather, the way I'm going to present tonight is in general terms, because I think you can have an opportunity to delve into the depth and some of the details in the reports. But we will pause to take moments of questions or to have some dialogue where needed. So I ask that you hold your questions until we get to those particular portions, but we'll have several throughout the presentation. So I'll talk about some initial impressions. We'll move on to talk about community relations, climate, culture, and safety, teaching and learning. Well, we'll talk, that's where I put in some pieces on special education in our English learners, along with diversity, equity, inclusion, and SEL learning. We'll talk about business and operations, sort of the state of facilities, our technology department, and then ideas that we should be considering for strategic planning based on this entry process. This is important because this is not a findings and a plan. I want to be very clear about it. This is simply my way of saying to you, I think I've learned a lot about our school system. And these are the ideas that are in my head. And as we queue up our strategic planning conversations, I'm going to bring the, I'll be bringing these ideas to the table. Okay. Having a problem at the moment. There we go. And then finally, we'll wrap up with our portrait of a Neshoba graduate, and then bring it back to the evaluation booths. So voices in the process. Throughout the process, I engaged with many families and the community. Our faculty and staff participated in forums and had an opportunity to spend some time with our students, particularly our high school students within their student council. Some impressions and predominant themes that have come up for me throughout this process, there is a strong sense of community pride here in Neshoba, not just for each individual town, but for how the three towns interplay together. And there's a mixture of high-tech experience, farming, and trades in our towns, along with education and small businesses. There are many legacy residents, people that have gone to the Neshoba schools and returned to raise their families and send them to Neshoba schools. And that in turn builds strong traditions within our community and demonstrates that our community is highly engaged in the high expectations they have for just their school system, but all their students as well, that it bounds through the athletics and the arts. And when I say the arts, I also talk about industrial arts with visual arts, performing arts as well. Because all of our families, no matter the pathways our students choose, they look for excellence beyond the school system for their children. So they really want their students to be equipped with those skills to do well beyond their time at Neshoba. So some other things that have come up during this process is the need for transparency in the district. That our community is looking, and our teachers and our students are looking for partnerships so that we can articulate strategies and tactics together in order to reorganize, refresh, and focus the district on what we need to be in the years to come, particularly with the advent of the potential of a new high school building. To do that, we need to really dig deep and identify what our core values are, define the learning competencies that we think are most important for our students. And we're going to be able to do that because our school system has outstanding educators from pre-K through high school and beyond. That was a predominant theme, particularly from our parents in the community sessions this year. But we want to do it really in a spirit of inclusiveness. And in order to do these things, some themes that are going to come up in the presentation tonight are around distributive leadership. I alone, or the principals or the cabinet team, cannot lead this district unless we distribute leadership across our district in ways that are going to carry us forward. That old adage of many hands making light work is true also in terms of building a common vision and building a better education for our children. So to do that, we got to create some bench strength across the district. So you're going to be hearing some things about that. And we're also going to be hearing some things around how we need to coalesce around this concept of professional learning communities, where educators and leaders come together to really get down to sort of the root cause analysis of learning in our school system. So with that, some things our community is desiring, and not to read the slides to you, I'll just be general. The biggest thing is to have a connection. They want to have a connection not just with the superintendent's office, but with all the offices across our system, with our principals, and with our teachers. So we got to be thinking about, and looking at those consistent communication practices and standards. And we need to be timely about how we're interacting and working with our families as well. And so in that way, we're going to be able to discuss the observations, the wonderings, the important things people are thinking about. So a partner this year with us in Colin and the Communication Subcommittee to think of, you know, how effective are we in our communications? What tools are we utilizing well? What are we underutilizing? What are we not utilizing at all? And build that as part of our communication strategy so that our community really feels connected to anyone throughout our organization. So when we shift to talk about climate, culture, and safety, there's a lot of themes in here. And you know, to say that the last three years is a representative sample of what the long history and long culture of Neshoba is, I don't think would be accurate. I would make that statement, I think, in any school district across the Commonwealth right now, given all the challenges that we've had to meet. But what I will say is that there is a lot of positivity moving forward about what we're going to try to do here. So I just want to talk about, first of all, the morale. It's interesting, when you talk to the groups, it's the students that express the most positivity. I think as adults, we all might predict that ourselves, but the students have maintained a positive attitude about the conditions of the day. And our teachers are optimistic about the future, as I learned in my advisory group, which I actually am meeting with tomorrow. However, that doesn't mean that staff morale has not been challenged. It really has been challenged. As we've been short on substitute, filling positions at times, staff members going beyond and using their planning time and other devices to support in other classrooms when we simply did not have the staff to fulfill in places, it has been challenging. It's been hard. Not to mention the overall stress that we all feel as a result of the pandemic, combined with the politics that surround that. So we know that there's tension, and that tension exists when policy doesn't match, say, the perception or the perspective of a family or a group of families. And at no time across the course of the year would I say that we ever found the point to where that's satisfying at all. I think that'd be a unreasonable expectation, to tell you the truth. But I think what we're trying to establish is we're going to be consistent in how we look at things, and that's hard to do when there's shifting sands and expectations around us. But I think the most important thing for us to remember as we're walking through this is that whenever we're faced with tension or conflict, to try to remember that adage of, you know what? People are not giving us a hard time. Instead, they may be having a hard time. And if we develop that mindset, it shifts us to possibilities. So as we move on, diversity, equity, inclusion came up in our conversations, and I asked our community in our groups what efforts the school district's making here. Or those that are sort of inside the school system, the inside baseball piece, if you will, they could cite some professional development efforts, book reads, other things that we're doing. For those that are outside of the inner workings of the employees, the response typically was, I'm not sure, or I don't know. And in that way, what that suggests to me is that this is work that is important work that we need to do. We need to make it public. And most importantly, we need to look through a lens of equity so that we can create an inclusive culture for everyone and build a sense of belonging for everyone. No matter your race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender identity, religious affiliation, gender, intellectual or physical disability, your nationality, your income, your native language, and your body size and shape. These are all attributes that at times people can feel marginalized. And so in our work with diversity, equity, inclusion, we need to be mindful of that and advance that forward in our strategic plan. And social-emotional learning, we've done a lot of work in the last few years around this so that we can navigate the complexities of the pandemic. Dr. McGuire has reported back many times even this year on the work that we've been doing. And just this past Friday, Dr. McGuire hosted an incredible all-day conference for the educators in our system that focused in on diversity, equity, and inclusion and social-emotional learning. So I just want to take this as an opportunity to highlight and commend Dr. McGuire and the entire teaching and learning team for putting together some fabulous learning for us. But this is going to be, I shouldn't say but, and this is going to be work that we need to continue to do as we are sort of rebuilding and redefining, refocusing as we move forward. And last, in culture, climate, and safety, is I want to talk a minute just about health and just put a shout out to the nurses. They deserve a tremendous amount of thanks across our entire school system. They are the frontline responders to everything that we've been through, and they've had to have, to host and have some very difficult conversations as messengers. And they did it all while trying to maintain the health of the school. They are the definition of that sense of what it means to be calm in the face of chaos. So I just want to throw that shout out to our nurses and thank them for all the hard work that they've done this year. So with that, I'm just going to take a pause to see if there's any questions from the committee before I move on.
Mike?
Yeah, so to the superintendent, slide number three gave a whole bunch of ideas and themes that were mixed together. And there was one that I was unfamiliar with, and I know that it's addressed later on in the presentation, and that would be bench strength. I'm not familiar with that. Could you just clarify what that means?
Yeah, I am going to talk about that later on. But when I talk about bench strength, it's the sense of having people within our system that have the skills, the training, and the talent to step into another role if somebody is not able to fulfill that role. So Mr. Harash, if I were to suddenly become ill and not be able to do my duties, say, for the next few weeks, I know we have strong bench strength in Dr. McGuire to be able to fulfill my duties. I cannot say that that is the case across all leaders in our department. So it is going to be wise for us to build strategies where we have people that can, you know, the analogy would allow, come off the bench and fulfill those roles.
Got it. Right. Thank you.
Any other questions on this portion? All right, I think we can keep going.
All right, I think we can keep going.
Great. So let's shift into teaching and learning. Uh some of the data sets you're going to be seeing uh seeing come from Massachusetts School and District profiles and you can see uh the link there. If you wanted to go dig around in some data and historical data. Um so we're going to look at some district level data and talk about curriculum instruction assessment, fine and performing arts, health and wellness. Athletics, extracurricular activities and clubs, special education and English learners. So when we look at the academic data, I want you to really note here. Uh this is an aggregate of all grades three through eight in ELA. And you see the test in twenty nineteen and you see the test results from twenty twenty one. And that's because we did not have an MCAS in twenty twenty. But I also want the the committee and our community to know that the two tests in those years are different tests. The twenty twenty one test was just over fifty percent uh smaller than the previous test. And it is a baseline really for what our new understanding of learning is. So to take our performance relative to two twenty nineteen and compare it to twenty twenty one wouldn't be a fair comparison. Different tests and the cohorts have changed. But I provide these graphs here for you to give you a sense of how did our district measure relative. To the state in twenty nineteen and relative to the state in twenty twenty one. And we can say that our students historically and continue to perform above the trends of the state across Massachusetts. This is not a new piece of information. I recognize that. But I just think it's a point to say that pre hybrid remote learning, post hybrid remote learning. We're relatively in those same positions uh against the state data. And I know right now the state is looking at how to recalibrate these growth measures based on the new test. Because they have to use the metrics from the previous test. So you can see those growth metrics, uh forty to sixty is the bandwidth that you want to be in and we're just shy of that forty. And I don't know if that comes as a big surprise to us because we know there would be some learning lags as a result of hybrid uh and and remote learning. But moving forward, I think the metrics we're going to get from Desi uh looking at MCAS. Is going to be more a more valid, more trustworthy set of data. Uh but it's going to take a couple of years as uh we recalibrate to the standard uh standards as and the new exam. So that trend that I just described through ELA, I'll I'll move through these quickly, is a trend. Uh that you uh can see in math relatively, uh but what I would notice uh. Yeah, so you can see the relative difference from from the two categories. And our growth growth metric while thirty five still sits there about five points ahead. Then we look at grade ten ELA, the growth metric is stronger. Again, I don't know what that means today. Uh because we don't have a a relative benchmark against that. Uh but the performances relative to the state remain relatively close uh to what it was pre pandemic, post pandemic. And you would see in that data, uh that would be true of tenth grade mathematics as well. So as we look at our enrollment, we can see and you remember from my enrollment presentation that we have had a declining enrollment in Neshoba the last few years. Well, interesting enough, that is true of the states as well. So we know this is true in the Northeast and the Commonwealth and you can see this in transit and census data as um. Uh uh we look at congressional seats being shifted and changed to other parts of the country that are growing. So this is not news to us and and we reflect really the trend that we see in Massachusetts. Now, when we look at our high needs enrollment, these are students that are identified by DESI as students with disabilities. English learners, current and former, economic disadvantage and high needs for educational uh programming. That that's been increasing over the last few years. It has in the States as well. So this is an area we need to monitor and watch. Highly qualified teachers, you can see we have outstanding teachers. They are licensed and they are teaching ninety percent of the subjects, ninety six percent of the subjects they teach. The four percent that they aren't are either they're teaching one off courses because that we don't have a specialty for maybe that one course at the high school. Or we're there in an emergency license status. But the last uh column, eighty six point seven percent of our teachers are labeled as experienced teachers and that's. Us teachers that are with us four years or more. And that tells us that our teachers come here and they stay. They are dedicated to our community. So when we look at our attendance, it's pretty consistent, uh just shy of that ninety six mark, which meets uh state expectations. And you see the average number of days absent and chronic ab absenteeism. I do expect in twenty uh twenty two, those numbers are going to go down as a result of this year. And some of the attendance reporting I've been uh showing you at school committee meetings. For our high school students, our graduation rates have been consistent over time. Uh I I want you to take that number of ninety five percent uh with caution as you look at it against the dropout rate. Uh that ninety five percent includes students that are that are Neshoba students. But they may be uh receiving their education outside of Neshoba for specialized programming. And by definition of graduation rate in DESI regulations. Um uh it is those who receive the four year diploma, uh not an alternative diploma. Uh so that would explain for that gap there. And then you get a sense of our graduates. This was brought up a couple of weeks ago. Uh when uh we were talking about our graduates in terms of uh going on to four year institutions and two year institutions. And look at that year twenty twenty, I've shared with you the story that my daughter was a graduate of twenty twenty. And she elected uh not to start college until a year afterwards. And I must tell you, she's doing very well, uh and that was a great decision on her behalf. And it looks like many of our Neshoba students that did something similar. So when we look at our high school students, I'm very proud to say that ninety percent of our students enroll in courses in the arts. Uh ninth grade students, eighty six point five of our students pass all their courses. And our eleventh and twelfth graders, eighty seven percent of our juniors and seniors. Um take at least one advanced placement course. And they, one hundred percent of our graduates meet the math score completion, which is four years English, four math, three science and social studies. Two of a world language, one in the arts and uh five other courses in all one of those departments. So when we look at teaching and learning in terms of the curriculum. Uh we have curriculum trajectories uh K to eight for all of our subject areas. And we have curriculum materials uh for those, some of those future curriculum materials are like Lucy Colkin's units of study, foundations, big ideas and vision math. I want to be very clear about this. As I spoke with our CPAC groups about this, these are the curriculum materials. But they are not our curriculum trajectories. They are the tools we choose to insert to teach the standards that are based on the Massachusetts frameworks. And those Massachusetts frameworks are always under constant examination as we look at how students are performing in their assessments. So as you know, we're doing a curriculum pilot. Uh the social studies updates have been a highlight of curriculum advancement in recent years, particularly uh bringing in the overhaul to the civic standards. In our high school, we have our published courses, studies and our courses as well. I think what we need to do, however, is think about consistently across all courses and standard uh all courses. In terms of ensuring that every course has a clear trajectory of standards, essential questions, enduring understandings. And learning compass competencies specific to each unit of study. We house these in Rubicon Atlas and our teachers have access to them. But we need to do some work on on really defining and building alignment across those documents. For our instruction, we uh K to eight working in a workshop instruction model and we balance it with a traditional model of instruction. So there's a mixture of seat time activities and collab of group work happening. In the high school, it is predominantly a traditional model of instruction where there's a high degree of seat time. However, I don't want to suggest that our students aren't involved in project based learning, uh simulations, collaborative teamwork. They are, and I've seen it with my own eyes. Um but I think as we look forward to learning in the 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 future, we want to be lifting those types of practices. In in lieu of seat time or lecture work, so our students again are are growing and building those learning competencies. Next is assessment and and I bring this forward, this is a comprehensive assessment triangle. Um that you can see the reference here in the Data Coach's Guide to Improving Learning for All Students. Formative classroom assessments make the base of this triangle and that's the thing that's happening every day. Where teachers are assessing their students and giving quality feedback. We have these things going on across our school system now. As we look at formative common assessments, those are the writing samples, the journals, other student work uh that is happening throughout the week. Benchmark common assessments, you can think of as unit assessments after a period of four to six weeks. Common grade level writing prompts and tests that are given. Uh benchmark dipsticks, like I've talked about this year with Renaissance Learning that we currently do with Lexia. Uh we complement that even further with data about people practices and perceptions. And the tip of the assessment triangle are the provisional uh provision or excuse me, provincial assessments. Like MCAS, SAT, uh ACT. Where we need to improve here are in these three areas. And this is not to suggest that we don't have benchmark assessments, formative assessments and classroom assessments. This is to suggest we don't have the professional learning community practices of building common assessments. Across our teams and through our departments so that we could get together in groups to disaggregate. Student learning in a way that's going to inform our instructor collectively in teams. And borrowing best practices from each other that we see are highly effective in our classrooms. So this is work that we really need to be thinking about and doing that I put in some of my recommendations of advancing forward. Uh when we look at uh fine performing and vocational arts, uh we have a a robust history of engaging students in these uh these these areas. We need to align and grow these programs within the school day, however. Uh and that that's desired from our students and our community members, uh particularly by creating academic pathways in the arts. So if we have academic pathways in performing arts, technical theater, vocational arts. Um robotics within the school day, we're going to be able to think uh uh give students experience and build competencies that they can apply. Post graduation from high school. Uh we know our theater has significant limitations and sound issues. Um and so there are lots of opportunities to grow these uh uh opportunities. And and I want to lift those out of just extracurricular activities and think about how we build rigorous courses. Uh that are engaging that students would choose for their electives uh based on their interests. So as we look at health, wellness and athletics, we have strong programs across all levels, our middle school uh programs. Leading up into our high school programs, uh health in the elementary schools is a strength, I must tell you. Uh in many, many systems, I would say the majority uh the health curriculum is incorporated into the PE curriculum. For us to be able to have that, I think is excellent in our system. Um and athletics are very important to community. We get high attendance at athletic events. I I had a chance to see uh soccer, football, field hockey, ice hockey this year, volleyball. Um all well attended by our community and our students. So as I talked about before, uh as we look at our extracurricular activities, we have a tremendous amount of programs out there. Uh we have lots of focus groups and and clubs that are focused on a mission or a purpose. Um I know Sonya is that our green person and heads up that program. Um these are all curriculum that live outside the day or they're incorporated maybe into some coursework in the day. Again, I would emphasize for those that are robust and show some high participation, maybe that's a signal to us that we need to be thinking about some course design. So I will pause again right there to take any questions on uh the teaching and learning component.
Sorry, guys. Uh Mike, why don't you start us off?
Sure, I have two questions if that's okay. Um the first one is that it's clear with this um this second segment. Um that you are uh sharing through data, uh which I very much appreciate. I'm wondering if your findings suggest that within the district, we have a culture of. System wide data or research driven decision making with regards to things like curriculum, instruction. Uh learning, best practices, or have you found that our decisions are largely um desperate, individualized and maybe autonomous?
Uh Mr. Hares, you are are nailing the question that I came into the system with and I've had many conversations about. Um initially, I did have my my concern around that was greater initially than it is today as I've gotten to know the system better. Um so the teaching and learning team has flooded me with information about where we're collecting our reading inventories. Uh looking at Rubicon Atlas for the curriculum trajectories and common ways. Uh looking at our Lexia learning and how we're using Lexia across all of our schools uh for particularly for early literacy uh assessments. So I would say we had, there are good assessment practices across our system. What we really need to do is A, we got to get that that spine in, which is why I've really. Uh been promoting, bringing in Renaissance Learning and our implementation of that. Because that is, that would be our flagpole, our ankle. Uh uh our anchor that we can then look at our body of evidence around to understand what to do for kids. That's the professional learning community work that you just referenced, uh Mr. Hares. In terms of how we come together and build those practices on a regular basis in common professional learning community time each week for our teachers. In terms of hosting data meetings that are focused focused on those things, elevating the practice of our. Our literacy and math specialists and our principals along the way. So yes, we have good assessment tools here, but we have work to do. On bringing them together so they're common across our grade levels and our departments. And then using that data to inform our instructional practice at a micro level. And then ultimately through our student assistant team process at a micro level.
Um awesome, thank you. Uh and I think you've nearly completely answered my second question. I'll just throw it out there um at any rate. Um I I I again, I I think that you've answered it, but I was wondering if you felt that our. I know that we use Atlas Rubicon to establish um curriculum standards, essential questions. I'm wondering if you have found that our philosophies, our individual teaching philosophies are not only aligned. Are they explicitly identified and accepted as a pathway on how we work towards achieving our long term. And short term goals across grades, across buildings and across the district. In other words, is there this big wraparound theme? With regards to these um philosophies?
Yeah, you're you're asking a great question and it comes back to what we talked about with distributive leadership earlier. I will say we do have, there there is a degree of individualized, independent development of trajectories and some assessments. We need to improve upon that. We're not going to be doing that, we're not going to be able to do that if Dr. McGuire and myself just go out and ask people to do that. This is where distributive leader matters and this is why layer in my recommendations, you'll see. That we expand the role of department head, that we build uh directors for our arts programs, uh for our health and wellness program. Uh for guidance K to twelve, so that we can do the alignment work both horizontally and vertically. So yes, that's a practice that we need to grow and improve on today. But we can't do it under the current organizational structure that we have. We have to um grow the distributive leadership model. So that we can get many people involved in the development of that work.
Thank you.
Amy's next. Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. My question, I think this is the right time to ask it because it's about um. Instructional methods and. How, whether or not the strategic planning process that you're going to undertake. Will be reviewing um the use of technology with instructional practices because. But really what got me thinking about it is this, the pilot program that you've referred to for math instruction.
Yep.
Um when we moved to the Neshoba district, um. It was a big shift in terms of the use of technology by the district here versus where we came from. And it seemed at the time as if there had been kind of a strategic decision that was made to embrace. Um the use of technology um to prepare students for becoming twenty first century citizens. Um and so I'm just wondering, like, as you review all this stuff, is that something that you plan to articulate? More as a strategic goal, whether, you know, how much is a is appropriate um at each grade level or in. You know, elementary, middle, middle and high school. Uh or and also kind of look at the consistent use of it um across the district.
So Emery, thank you for your question. It's a good one. I think the way, I you know, I didn't include technology in this section intentionally. That was a very intentional move on my behalf. Um and that is because it's not about the technology. It's about what the the student ultimately learns through. Through the mess methodologies that we use. Technology today. These are when when you know I was going to school in the seventies and eighties, it was my backpack with my notebook and my books. And my pencils and my markers and technology like those things is simply required element for learning now in schools today. And it's incorporated into teaching and learning. And so we're going to be looking at Flick classroom type of bottles, blended learning type of models. I'm using some terminology right now without definition, but that's incorporating technology with. Let's just call them for lack of a better term, the analog tasks to give students a well-rounded perspective. Because the analog is just as important as as building the digital skills required in in technology. The key to that Mrs. Cohen is I'm gonna come back to this and you'll hear me come back to it a thousand times. Um I I I think I heard Senator Booker say yesterday and it's an overused phrase uh that we've heard in lots of places. Uh in God I trust, everyone else bring me data. Um because and and what it means by that is the assessment information that we that we collect around our instructional practices. Are gonna tell us which ones are the most effective for our students. So if our data is telling us instructional practices around a particular analog area is highly effective relative to digital. Let's just reduce it to something basic like um memorizing math facts, for instance. We're gonna replicate the practice that is the most effective practice. So I think having good assessment structures with the PLC, the human interactive piece with our professionals around that. Is what's gonna inform us in terms of our usage of technology in the classroom and at home.
Anybody else have any questions? Alright, I don't think so. Oh, I'm sorry, I think I see Rich's hand, go ahead Rich.
I just want to make a comment. I think it's just really a student of you to to realize that technology is going to evolve. And what we're using today might not be what we're using five years ago, five years from now, right? It's things, things are fast becoming mobile, so it's it's not so much the how, it's more about the why. And I'm glad to hear that you're focusing on that.
Thank you, Mr. Ekel. Okay, so um let's talk about special education. We're gonna look at some performance data. Uh talk about our programs, some extracurricular activities and formal special education processes. Um so if you take a look at special education, this is the percentage of students in our school system over the last three years. That have individual education plans relative to state numbers. When you look at these numbers relative to our schools, you can see I put those state numbers in the center. And we have some variance across our school systems, particularly our L, excuse me, our elementary and middle schools. And then a significant drop at our high school. We need to do some data mining on this. And understand why do we see these variances across our school? And when I say data mining, it's gonna take courage. This was, and I'll just be honest, a a hot topic of debate. Uh in my candidacy uh during the superintendent uh uh search process. And I totally get it and I understand why. What we need to have the courage to do is dive into that data to to find the root causes of why we see some differences. We may see that there are some so- social factors involved here. We may see that there's some gaps in instructional practice. Uh there in the root cause, a combination of both, maybe an influx of movement, but it's gonna require us to take some deep study. What I do know is that when our students go to uh high school, for many of our students where. School hasn't felt like the right fit for them, oftentimes it is our students that have individual education plans. And in seeking out um uh uh vocational school, charter school. Uh i- is an option that that they consider as a better fit because maybe those programs are offering teaching and learning in ways. That match their learning styles. So uh I present these to you not with any claims. I simply present them to you as the numbers, but we got to dig in and get down to the essence of of these numbers. So that we can understand our students well and provide them the instruction they need. So as we look at our programs, you can see we have programs across all of our schools. I won't go into deep depth about these programs. But there's a range of programs across the school and they walk up through the grades. So you can follow along with our. Our connections program beginning in preschool, uh entering into elementary at uh uh center school. Uh then into Hale Middle School and ultimately our high school. This is the design of these programs. And I think it's important to know as I I studied and looked into this, um this has provided a great service to our communities. Because we can provide intensive services for students who need them within our school district. We recognize there is some movement from town to town, but we are able to keep uh the many students within our school communities. But still, some students have needs that go beyond the scopes of these programs and for them. Uh we have to find require uh specialized settings for them outside of the district. And our uh special education uh extracurriculars, we offer best buddies at both the high school and middle school. Uh unified bowling, other unified activities as well, uh like track. Uh there are uh many middle school clubs and recreational activities uh that are integrated activities. And we have unified basketball, of course, being a basketball guy, uh I'm very particular to that. So. Uh opportunities for our stu- uh all of our students to uh be able to to engage in these activities together. And what I will say about these activities, as we look at our core values, there is no better way to build empathy. In each other than working with students that might have some skill struggles that you don't have and helping them build those skill struggles. So these programs I think are fabulous program for all of our students. They are not just programs uh for students. Uh with IPs, they're for all students uh to build those skills. So serving our students and families uh in some conversations around, there's been some conversations and some wonderings. Uh about our uh school system in terms of already meeting the needs of our students, already meeting the needs of our families. And so as I've dug into this, um I can say we have an extremely strong special education team. And they work hard to meet the regulations that are required under special education law. They also have quite a bit of a growth mindset and I think the the best best way to to. Show this is that in bringing forward some of the concerns that their families have had in terms of their experience. Um we wanted to get a sense of what is our uh particularly around the team meeting process, uh we wanted to get a sense of that. So uh I've worked uh with Ms. DeAngelis, who has led an effort in the People Personnel Services Department to develop. A team meeting exit survey that is gonna be launching very shortly, that fa- every family. That uh goes through the team meeting process, whether their child qualifies for services or do not qualify for services. Will take the survey so that we can formally assess along the way how we're meeting the needs of students and families. So rather than uh take the narrative of of singular stories or a group of stories. We're gonna get to everybody in these data sets to understand what our trends are because we want to know. Uh on both a macro and micro level, how we can grow and always improve. So uh complaints that have been brought forward by families and submitted to problem resolution systems at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I can tell you those are always a prompt uh addressed promptly and consistency by the department. And the vast majority of the complaints that are filed have returned in favor of the district of meeting all the requirements that they need to meet in these processes. But in cases where we may have tripped, and there were some trips, particularly in the time of remote and hybrid learning around timelines. Our team has worked hard to put in any corrective actions that are required. Uh to meet any concerns that that were were brought forward. So again, I commend Ms. DeAngelis and her entire team. Uh for working hard in this department and working with families to the best of their abilities uh to try to find uh mutual agreements. Uh the the fact of the matter is sometimes it's difficult to get to mutual agreement and 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 that can be hard. And we recognize that and we'll just continue to try to work better through that. So look at our English language learners, uh you can see that we have a small percentage of English language learners in our school system. Uh but I have to tell you, in terms of number going from two point one percent to three percent in two years, that's that's actually a fifty percent increase. Uh in rough numbers, that is essentially sixty to ninety students in our school system. So it is a growing demand in our school system and we have not grown in staffing in our EL department. So we're gonna need to explore really uh how how to look at this and consider a reorganization. But here are some of the curriculum materials uh that are we're currently engaging with and are looking to uh for our programs in the future as well. Okay, so I'm gonna stop there uh and take another breath for any questions relative to special education and English learner programs.
Alright, would anybody like to ask a question? Sorry. I wonder, when you talk about all of the data that you're collecting, is this data that is going to be shared? Or is this just an internal collection that will inform your movement?
Yeah, every every piece of data that you see in here is provided uh at the link I gave at the beginning of the presentation. It's on the Desi website. Are are you talking, so what other day, are you talking about the exit survey data?
Well, that's the thing that popped out at me that I wonder about.
Yeah, we will be coming back to, we'll uh once we uh are able to get a year cycle in with our exit survey data. Well, I think we should make it a practice to annually come back to the school committee and report back on our findings in areas for growth.
I really appreciate that.
And and I think that should complement also the hard work that our CPAC has done. Or they do an uh an annual dipstick uh uh survey of the community. So it kind of matches up the assessment triangle I showed before as the CPAC is taking that vertical slice once a year on general things. And then we are also doing this regular formative assessment around our practices. I think we're gonna have a nice data set around understanding. Uh the zigs and zags that we need to make in the future as as we always strive for continued improvement.
Any other questions? Alright. Carry on.
Uh so looking at business and operations, I have to say we've been talking about business and operations a lot lately. I feel we're pretty well versed in this topic. But I do want to say I've been able to examine the budgets of the last five years. And uh the methodology that I've talked about and and have expressed to the community this year. I have to say uh again, kudos to one of my team members and that is uh Pat Maroni. She has consistently developed a thorough budget that is responsible uh over the past five years that I've examined. Uh the annual audits show consistency and accuracy uh in expenditures and reporting and our certifications year over year. Um I will say a a repeat, as I repeated in the budget presentation before. That we have in recent years developed an overreliance in time uh on in the excess and deficiency funds to meet budget needs. And we're we're gonna need to be mindful and think about that in future budget development. Because our excess and deficiency, it you know, it's a terrible term. I I don't like using it here, but I can't draw a better better term. It's that rainy day of of being able to address the unpredictable lack of resources or funding that that may come. Uh you know, I were in chapter seventy, we 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 received a bountiful chapter seventy funds this year compared to past years. What if we're in a situation uh where state uh receipts are low and regional transportation comes in much lower than we expect? These are are unforeseen events, which is why we need to make sure excess and deficiency always remains healthy. Uh enrollment, we I've given some thorough presentations on enrollment to the school committee, so I won't go into great detail on that tonight. But I will say, I believe our elementaries are are passing enrollment decline, our our middle schools are sort of in the middle of that. And our high school is gonna continue to see that for for three, four more years. But in looking at our enrollment in the buildings themselves, we are maintaining our ratios of being twenty-two to one. Uh before the year begins in grades K to two and twenty-four to one across all other grades. I know there's one grade level in Stowe, the kindergarten level that that uh exceeded that after the school year began. And we're making the appropriate adjustments, so as first grade we recalibrate for that. Um so I I I uh thank Mr. McLaren for for putting some hard work there as well. At the high school, it's so much different because everything is course-driven instead of section-driven. Uh but Dr. Boynton and I will conduct an annual audit of of enrollment in courses across the high school. To understand where courses can be consolidated. So for instance, uh we may be able to look at, say, freshman English and consolidate it down. Uh because we have such a large senior class of twelve section going out, we may only need eight to ten sections of freshman English coming in. But I will say it is not gonna impact. The breadth of the offering of courses. Uh we would do that consolidation in areas where where there's a lot of common sections given. Um so that we can continue to o- offer a variety of courses to our students. Um our staffing is very appropriate across the entire school system. Uh so as we look at that, uh our our teachers have full schedules, uh they are also getting their appropriate uh agree upon planning time and preparation time. And they meet those ratios as we've uh talked about. So as we look at how enrollment changes shift. Those those things might be the places we can look to where we can think about some of these uh uh. Electives that could be incorporated into the school day. That I forward on to the strategic planning process and will take so much uh deeper analysis. And then also, this is important, but I want to emphasize that's in terms of leadership. Uh and I want to come back to Mr. Hares's uh comment on bench strength. So we need to develop some shared responsibilities to ensure we don't miss deadlines, requirements, etc. So by having some overlap in our job descriptions, essentially having somebody that can come off of the bench and fulfill for somebody in a position. Uh given unforeseen events, uh I I worry about that right now. I talked about that before. Uh when we talked about the the business office with Mr. Ms. Maroni retiring, Mr. Mulgram coming in. That I I want to elevate that position to an assistant um director position. That is an example of growing bench strength. But not just growing bench strength in terms of the titles, but in the capacity of our people. We need to be directing our people to the types of programs in terms of leadership programming, certificates, endorsements. That give them the opportunities and choices to step intervals so we're not always locked into licensure and roll if we need to make some changes. So um in doing that, we also need to grow the capacity of our building leaders, leaders, make meaningful contributions. And when I look there, I look at our our high school department heads, for instance. Uh that we can uh uh grow, redefine that department head position so that they're part of the observation. Process with our teachers, curriculum curation, alignment grades six through twelve. And develop in our our related arts, industrial arts and health and wellness programs. Yeah, K to twelve uh coordinators that can do that same kind of work. Again, ideas I'm advancing forward. Uh but that is what's gonna help us build leaders across the school system to take ownership of those things I talked about in curriculum instruction. And assessment, uh because that's gonna help us flatten the leadership responsibility and the leadership triangle across the organization. And when you can do that, anybody knows when you have a wider base, you have a stronger building. And that's what I'm trying to do in terms of the way our organizational chart looks. And our leadership triangle looks. But I think it's important to say, I'm not at, I'm not suggesting these things because I'm gonna be asking for new positions. I think given what our enrollment looks like and what our budget um uh revenue looks like. We're gonna have to do that inside in terms of how we define the roles and responsibilities in the positions that we currently have. So in terms of facilities, at Center, we don't have any major issues going on, just some normal wear and tear. And then uh we're gonna be having some boiler maintenance coming up. I'll I'll breeze through these quickly. See Florence Sawyer, uh the carpet replacement will be happening on the first floor this year and soon after that, the second floor. We're gonna continue to work hard to bring central uh air conditioning to that school for uh air quality improvement. And we have some window replacement coming. Hell, we know the Hartley Road winding will happen this year, some gym floor resurfacing, uh some other items that have to be updated that you see here. And then you see a potential larger project coming in FY twenty-seven in terms of the roof at Hale. Luther Burbank, again, some of uh the issues of replacing carpet and uh uh flooring in classrooms. And so looking at the chilled hot water pumps and some parking lot repairs that will be coming up in future years. Mary Rollinson, very much uh sort of the same, being a common building to Luther Burbank. And at the high school, we're taking an as-needed approach. Um we're gonna look at repairs for the systems to keep the life of the building and everything safe and everybody in good place. Uh but cosmetic projects are gonna be kept to a minimum uh as we're through this feasibility stage. And ultimately get to a decision from the MSBA and take it to our town. If at that point we'll know for sure certain what types of things we should and should not do at our high school. Uh with technology. Um we have a large degree of technology support across our our system as Miss Cohen alluded to. Uh but we also have to manage data privacy, security, uh backing up data. Uh managing aging devices, security systems, and our team is really stretched. And I will tell you a major issue that they're stretched with is public records requests. We have. We had one request come to us this year that required us to find thirty thousand documents. Uh, that was not a request that came from our school system. It was outside of our school system. Um, but you can only imagine that type of research, uh, can be debilitating to our department. And we rely on our technology department there. So that's a challenge we have to be. So in terms of, uh, uh, fiscal services and technology, do we have any questions?
Kirk, just one quick clarification. The items that you, that you listed in the facilities piece. Might not happen this year, right? They're on the warrants for the towns?
Uh, th- thank you for, for that clarification. Uh, at, uh, uh, Center School and at Florence Sawyer School. Uh, those are brought forward to the towns in terms of ARPA money. So I believe those two projects are being funded by ARPA, not at town meeting.
Got it. Mike?
Um, the, the, um. Chromebook initiative that we started a couple of years ago was sort of a big jump. Um, and it was, um. A little bit scary because we weren't really sure about, um, well, at least, uh, maybe others were, but I, I wasn't totally. Sure about how we could sustain, um, the, uh, maintenance of the devices. Um, the evergreen system of renewal. And I'm just wondering from your lens. Are we engaged in a process that is sustainable over the long run? I know that you said that our technology staff is stretched pretty thin, but. Are we in a place where we're going to be overwhelmed by some of these needs? Or are we in a good place?
So Mr. Harest, right now, in terms of, let's just talk about laptops. We, we are now in our regeneration phase. So we have built up to the goal. And it's at this point that we're in our multi-year cycle of, of device replacement. So that's a good thing. Mr. Harest, I don't know what's gonna be the next tall technology that walks out the door. And so we're gonna have to be thinking about that and be ready for those moments. As we look to things like augmented reality, virtual reality, uh, our interactive whiteboards are going to begin to fail. Um, we're gonna have to make decisions what we do about that, if we even decide to replace them, because there's just simply better technology today. That is always going to remain a dynamic decision. Uh, but I will tell you that the thing that puts the, the, the strain on our team more than any of those other devices. Is the public records requests. And those have nothing to do with technology. It's just we use. Our technology team to help us find the emails and the documents that people were searching for.
Wow.
Hi Karen.
I just have a question on the, um, business and operations leadership slide. I just need some clarification. So you. When you talk about growing the capacity of building leaders to make, um, contributions. Uh, you mentioned observation, I think about, um, department heads. Can you just clarify what you? I apologize. I think I just misunderstood. Can you just say that piece again?
Yeah, Karen, it's exactly that of expanding the role of the department head at the high school. But what I will say is that's just not something we do. That is something that, uh, in our interest-based bargaining with, uh, the NREA this year. Uh, we're gonna visit that question. We just, we've had some cursory conversations around it. But it's around redefining those job descriptions to meet the needs. So I can't say specifically what that's gonna be. Because I think I want to honor the strategic planning process and ultimately the conversations we have with the NREA. Because I really look to them as our partners, uh, to put forward what we think is gonna be a, a great leadership model for the school system. But, uh, it incorporates doing things like observations of lessons of, uh, and giving feedback to teachers. Um, of, of curriculum, curation, of assessment, analysis. There's lots of things that the department leader role, uh, would take on.
Thank you.
Uh, Amy, go ahead.
Thank you. I clicked the wrong button. Can you all hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, I wanted to just ask a question that was posed, uh, via email to. Me and, and Mr. Horace recently about. An organizational chart for the school district. And if that's something that you're going to be. Um, as part of your strategic planning process. Putting together and, and sharing with the community as a part of this process. Um, I think it ties into your slide on central office departments and, and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. That would be part of the documents that ultimately were crafted there. I mean, we can see what we have by, by looking at detail in our budget, but what I'm suggesting to you is. It's, it's, it's not the number, it's the shape of the leadership triangle. Right now, we have a very steep leadership triangle and we need to flatten it. Um, and, and we need to do that with the resources we have, not by, uh, looking for more resources to do it.
Thanks Kirk. Any other questions on this part? All right, carry on.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so the strategic planning process. Um, Doc, there's Scott Marshall and a team from Teaching Learning Alliance is gonna work with us on the strategic planning process. So here is the construction of our strategic planning team. I will tell the committee right now. Where, where I'm having a challenge is we have our team built. Spring activities are popular with students and, and getting a student to commit five, uh, three hours of their time, five days. In the spring is pretty tough, uh, but I will continue to work with, uh, Dr. Boynton on that. Um, but it is a, a cross-section of people that'll be working with our consultants. And we're gonna be, uh, also doing focus group meetings. So we'll be doing, uh, some meetings with municipal leaders. Uh, I'm gonna send that invitation out to them on Friday. Um, and our, we will do the school committee in public, uh, six o'clock at our next school committee meeting. School district employees will be a part of the process, as will the Nishoba community. Uh, and these are, uh, going to be Zoom forums. So these are gonna be online forums. Because, uh, frankly, I saw in the process of my forums, I got more participation this way. So I've decided to do it this way, uh, so that we can get as much participation in those meetings as possible. Then our actual strategic planning meetings of the team will be on the following dates. With our last date being June ninth. And we'll bring forward the draft strategic plan for, uh, our school district to the school committee on June fifteenth. I'm not expecting a vote at that meeting. It's a presentation of the plan. And it's gonna give us the summertime to dig into it, to think about it, to ask some questions, provide some feedback. But at least it's gonna point us at that place, particularly since we have three representatives that will be on that group. It'll point us to the place that we need to go in terms of our goal development for school committee, superintendent goals, school committee goals. Ultimately, school goals that triple the teachers and students as well. So some ideas to consider from strategic planning. Is building that distributive leadership model that I talked about. And I think I've addressed this, so I won't repeat the things that I've said thus far. And creating that bench strength in the central office in terms of leadership roles. And, and thinking about, do we have current roles we can define as, uh, assistant leadership roles, assistant directors or assistant coordinators? To provide those things. Um, so we need to develop a fiscal planning structure that prioritizes our charge to educate students to their greatest potential. While working closely with, uh, towns to fund our budgets in responsible ways. Uh, I will say, one of the practices that I just, I, I take a little bit of pride in, forgive me. Um, for that little moment of greed, uh, but engaging with our three P and coms together in a joint meeting. Uh, for me, was one of the highlights of this year, uh, because I think it showed, uh, from all parties. A desire to, to have a beneficial, mutually beneficial partnership. And it's in that spirit that I want to continue to, to build our fiscal strategies. We need to think about our work in terms of equity, diversity, equity, inclusion. As I said before, in my old, uh, earlier. It's that looking through a lens of equity to build a sense of belonging in all of our students. All of our employees, all of our visitors. And, and we do these things, uh, because we want our students to have the skills to navigate all the environments that they're going to navigate in their lifetime. In ways that shows mutual respect, uh, no matter, uh, what form you come into a room with. So, uh, I think we have a lot of work to do to get, to, to, to build into our strategic plan. And I'm gonna advance this forward really as a number one priority for our school system. Because if we can build that connectedness and belongingness in our school system. It, it then translates into every single sector of our strategic plan. So this is gonna be an important conversation for us to delve into. And what I would encourage everybody to do is let's, let's walk into this, uh, with a mindset of discovery. Um, the easy thing to do is to enter in with a mindset of judgment. If we enter in to some tough conversations with a mindset of discovery. We might learn some, some things about ourselves and each other that are gonna help us advance forward, uh, teaching and learning. For our students. So, um. With that. I'm getting a problem with my computer again. There we go. Um, we need to just improve upon the social emotional education in the district improvement plan. And what I mean improve upon is this has been a, a priority for Dr. McGuire in recent, uh, district improvement plans. And I commend him for that. So really, our strategic plan is to look at the work that we've done. And, and let's just market and build our arc and our trajectory over the next five years of, of what the logical, uh, next steps are. Uh, for our social emotional learning plans. We need to develop some really system-wide professional learning community practices like I talked about before. Um, this isn't something that you walk into a staff meeting and tell people and then it happens. It create, you, you, you gotta carve it out. You've gotta create the common time for teachers to meet. Uh, you need to provide robust professional development, uh, uh, workshops on how to, uh, look at data. Um, look, uh, learning how to use the platforms. Um, ultimately, we're bringing Schoolzilla in, so we have that learning analysis. And then developing those common assessments across our system. So all those things that I mentioned in the teaching and learning portion, they are not gonna be done in one year. It is going to take multiple years for us to hit all the marks that I pointed out that, uh, we can grow upon. Um, and as, as they say, there's, there's an old Chinese proverb about the, the two best times to plant a tree. Are thirty years ago and today. So I would say that, uh, we, we have a lot of good trees that were planted thirty years ago. Uh, that are of value. We need to keep in our system, but we need to plant some trees today to build these, uh, professional learning community practices. Now, uh, based on some of the structures I've discussed. As we look at our multi-tiered systems of support, this simply will grow out of those high-quality, uh, professional learning community practices. Uh, uh, building those common assessments and having the data dashboard. This is also, uh, a, a piece that I want to specifically pull off, that I've had a lot of conversations, uh, three specific conversations. Formerly with our CPAC, but more conversations, uh, uh, with the chairs of, of CPAC as well. If we are doing these things well and multi-tiered systems of support. We are serving our students with the skill struggles and it's providing information that can assist. Teachers, families in, um, the, uh, uh, team meeting process. When we feel stuck about why a student is not progressing. So in building these data sets, getting down to the essence of the five components of reading. And in our early measures, can we look at the indicators that might bring dyslexia forward as a student's, uh, uh, disability? And matching it with instructional practices at that moment. We do these things now. We have these tools in terms of, of, uh, uh, Lexia. And we have, uh, two, uh, educators that are trained in, in areas like Orton Gillingham instruction to get into that. We use foundations in our classrooms to get at those types of things. But what I'm saying to you is, in building this system of multi-tiered supports combined with good PLC work. We're gonna be, be able to build a culture of using data, and I don't mean number when I say data. I mean, all the information that goes into a student profile, as demonstrated earlier in the assessment, uh, triangle. Which the biggest and most important is the foundation, working with individual students and looking at their student work. So the multi-tiered systems of support is gonna be an important area of growth for us. I mentioned earlier that we need to look at the impact of, uh, uh, the K to A English learning program, uh, possibly at a single site. As we grow in number, we're stretched in resources. So I'm asking Dr. McGuire. Um, and I'm asking our, our team around, uh, all of our principals to look at our programs. To see if there's an adjustment we need to make for the future. So I'm not signaling that I'm making this adjustment right now. What I'm signaling is I showed you the increase in numbers that we've experienced the last couple of years. Let's not get caught on the back foot. Let's get out front, study this so that we have a plan. In the event that this trend continues to grow. Another important idea to consider, and I think a limitation that we have in our instructional practice, particularly when it comes to. To using blended learning, flipped learning, project-based learning methodologies. Is found in our master schedules and the limitations of, uh, uh, forty-six minute periods at our high school. And just a little bit longer in our middle schools. I think we need to look at our, our master schedules across the school system. Um, integrate courses, integrate our curriculum, uh, give students more time to be steeped in that learning. And be able to generate, create, innovate, um, so that they can demonstrate. Uh, the standards through the things they do, not the things they fill out or write or answer on a test. So we want, um, our assessments to be a balance of all those things. For us to, uh, ultimately achieve that balance, we really gotta look at a change in our master schedule across the school system. So we have some, um, uh, we need to call, consolidate our systems of feedback across the system to grow. And what I mean by that is, uh, our, our teachers and principals, they, they use, uh, feedback, um, devices with their communities. With their faculties to understand how they're, they're, uh, doing and their roles. But I think we need to build a system-wide strategy. Um, and I have some experience with this using the, the, the panorama platform. Of giving our community opportunities to provide feedback on the role of superintendent. Uh, faculty and staff, principals, cabinet leadership, uh, principals getting community feedback. Faculty feedback, student surveys, as well as our teachers getting those student and community surveys. And when I say that, um, I don't say, I think we need to craft some surveys and put it out there. What I'm saying. Uh, is I wanna work with each one of these groups. To come to what are the essential questions that we should put into surveys? That is gonna help us be better in the roles that we play. And they should be surrounded, uh, in, in how we look at our work, uh, no matter what your, uh, uh, place in the organization is. So these are not surveys that I am going to develop and implement. Rather, I'm gonna work with the teachers to create, craft what is a meaningful survey. I'm gonna work with principals to craft a meaningful survey for principals, for cabinet leadership. And I look to you, the school committee, to work with me, uh, possibly in our retreat format to craft. Um, the survey that will ultimately, um, be the annual survey we use for the superintendent. So with that, the last piece is our portrait of a Nishoba graduate. This group of people, uh, forty-nine of us, uh, met February tenth, eleventh and eighteenth. To work on the educational program for the feasibility study in the process of deciding. Uh, uh, whether we have an add rebuild renovation or new school, uh, for Nishoba High School. Collection of parents, students, educators, leaders, uh, town leaders. We had, uh, police representatives. We had, uh, town librarian representatives along with, uh, our experts from Skanska and KBA as well. And the work that we did around our profile of a graduate, the portrait of a graduate this year in the community that was, uh, built through our school councils. Through our faculty meetings, through our leadership councils, through our student council, we brought ten leading competencies forward. Um, and, uh, through a lot of discussion, this group elevated these six leading competencies. As our portrait of a Nishoba graduate competencies. The first being communication, and I'm gonna go through quickly here. Forgive that interruption. My black lab just decided to join the meeting. Creativity. Empathy. Culturally competent global citizen. Learner's mindset. Perseverance. Now, what I will say is that these six competencies that we have here. Were not the only competencies we talked about. We talked about these competencies as well, and forgive, I, I have creativity in, in there twice. Creativity doesn't belong in this set. Innovation, collaboration, problem solving and critical thinking were all competencies that were in the forums that all of you did out there were important. And so as we were in that room trying to decide where do we get, we got stuck. And really, the voice of our students came forward and said, look, I think we know what our leading competencies are. But let's lift the language, the sub-bullets of these other competencies and walk them over. To the six core competencies so that we ensure we're representing the voices of the people that advance these forward. And it frankly gives more detail to competencies like learner's mindset. And it frankly gives more detail to competencies like learner's mindset when you're able to put in the descriptors that you find in problem solving and critical thinking and collaboration. So these things are all going to be incorporated. The final step of just putting those elements in, I'm handing off to our principals, and they're going to work with their faculties on that, because I'll be bringing forward this to you at the same time as the strategic plan to adopt these competencies as the core competencies for a Portrait of a Neshoba Graduate. So it's at this point in time, I'd like to congratulate Dr. McGuire on his winning of our agreement today, as I've gone over an hour. But I just he didn't take the bat. So it's a courtesy congratulations. That I'm wrapping up the entry plan work and leading to the strategic plan forecast and our Portrait of a Neshoba Graduate. To bring you back to how Dr. McCarthy and Chair Vivarino opened the meeting around the performance standards for the superintendent. If you recall from our meeting earlier this year, you all adopted the recommendation from MSAC to look at these six core standards as the standards which we should focus on in my performance evaluation this year. And then when we look at the professional practice goals, what I did is I took the goal out of the goal document, and then I teased out the elements that I've done this year and the elements from this presentation as the evidence of work that I've done this year around developing a comprehensive communication strategy. I will, on this first goal, point immediately to the last of in the works. My thanks to the Communications Subcommittee and to its chair, Ms. Cohen, because we're going to be building a social media strategy. The website refresh is decided, and it's already being worked on with the content of that being updated and ready for launch in August prior to the next school year. We're looking at SMS texting options, and then we're also looking at how community members can subscribe to our emails along with that all-important calendar coordination and efficiency piece to give our community members ease of finding information. The second goal is around that idea of building that, the strength of an assessment piece being around benchmarking assessments. So the Renaissance Learning Pilot has been ongoing at Mary Rollinson Luther Burbank. They've done their second administration, and we'll be doing a third administration later, focusing on reading and math. So we went ahead and made that purchase for Renaissance Learning for next year, and we are going to do professional development with our teachers in May-June of this year with the goal of administering those assessments as a learning moment for us and also give us a baseline of where learning is in our school system. I will caution you right now, it is a first administration for everybody in that. So just like making cookies, the first cookie you pull out of the oven isn't necessarily the best cookie, but it tells you how to tune your recipe so that you can make good cookies later. That's going to be sort of our attitude in doing this training in administration, the assessment this year, so that the table is set for next year. So we have trainings to do with principals, assistant principals, literacy specialists, and math specialist specialists to lead our teacher in administration and data meetings, analyzing the result, making instructional plans. And then that will coincide with the implementation of the data dashboard with Schoolzilla in the fall of 2022. Those purchases have been made, and Dr. McGuire is setting up those trainings this spring. And then last of all is the building of the strategic vision and a five-year plan. You will not see that final submission until June fifteenth after the Summit of Assessment Process is completed. But I hope that what I've been able to do for you tonight and will do for you in the coming weeks is build confidence in you that I'm not doing these things at a virtue to hit these goals. I'm doing these things because this is what we need. This is what we need to advance the school system, to advance teaching and learning for our students so that they are excelling and setting the example of what school school should be about, not just in our region, not just in our state, but around the country and the world. Because I have high aspirations for our school system and for our students, because I want them to be able to do what it is they choose to do because they're inspired to do it, whether it's through college, through career, or through service. So we need to be an agile school system that is able to do that. And it's going to be through a comprehensive strategic plan that we're going to be able to pave the path to do that. So it is with that that I would like to wrap up and say thank you to everyone in this process. It's been quite a long process, and it's been a lot of work. I owe a great thanks to my coach, my mentor, Jane Tremblay, and working with me weekly along the way and forcing me to reflect and think about my observations so that I could coalesce these themes for you in a way that was meaningful. And I also want to thank my entire cabinet team, my principals, teachers, students, all of you out there for being a part of this process. The entry process is just that. It's entry. It's not conclusion. What I have learned and know about the Neshoba school system today is really sort of the tip of the iceberg. I need to now continue to work and build these practices so I get to understand the iceberg that's underneath the surface of the water so that we can do the kind of things that we need to do for the future. So with that, Madam Chair, I will turn it to you for questions.
All right, everybody. That was a tremendous presentation. Thanks so much, Kirk. Just a huge undertaking on your part, as we all know. I wonder if anybody has any final questions for Kirk as we move on? Anything that you would provide him feedback on for his summative evaluation? Mike?
As we went through this, you know, it started off as being a report of entry findings. It really, it really, in the end, felt a lot more like an audit, an audit of the district, and I mean that in a good way. It almost felt cathartic to frame both the assets and the deficits of the district and then put, you know, sort of this, you know, emphasis on potential and possibility. So I really, I mean, I know that this took an hour, and it probably could have taken longer if you didn't have a bet. And now I know why you had that timer going. Anyways, so I really appreciate the presentation and all the energy that went into this. Because I think this is what, you know, a growing district should be aspiring to. I have lots of questions, but I'm only going to ask one, and this is almost adding potentially something else to your plate. But we've talked a lot about formalizing our ideology as a district, you know, the portrait of the Neshoba graduate. And we've got all kinds of attributes in, you know, these characteristics that we want our students and our graduates to embrace and embody. To me, that seems like we almost need to revisit our mission statement as a district.
Mr. Hares, the strategic planning process is designed to do that. So we will be looking at our mission statement, our vision statement. We will be developing a theory of action for the school system that is going to advance us forward. That actually is how we begin that process after Teaching Learning Alliance helps us disaggregate all of our documents and data. And I will complement that also with why we developed these competencies we have just begun. As Dr. McGuire knows, he's heard me give this sort of soapbox speech many times. We're going to advance these competencies to eventually craft the Portrait of a Neshoba Educator as well. And when I say Portrait of a Neshoba Educator, I mean from the classroom to the superintendent's office. All of us are educators in our system. We just play different types of roles within the education of our children. So yes, ultimately, I think we're going to be re-crafting, rebranding, rewriting, and developing a theory of action that's going to advance us forward.
Rich?
As usual, Mike says it all, so I'm not sure what else I have to add. I absolutely have a question other than just a compliment. I think by virtue of me being out of a question, it kind of says it all. It kind of echoes the budget stuff that you did. There was, I think if there was some of the other public on here, they would probably be saying what they said up for the budget committee. I've learned more in the last hour than I've learned in the past five years, which is what a bunch of the informed FinCom members said. So bravo. I will be waiting to digest this and see if I actually have any questions. Thanks for all the hard work. To you and the team.
Anybody else? Are we okay? All right. So seeing no hands, I think it's time to move on. Thank you so much again, Kirk.
Thank you.
Very informative. Congrats. All right, everybody. So back to our agenda. Our next matter of new business is to vote to approve new members of the school building committee as identified at our last meeting. And I think Mike might have a motion for us.
I do. I will move to approve Kristen Kendall, still resident with a voting share, and Joe McCarthy, non-voting participant, and a Neshoba Regional High School faculty as members of the Neshoba Regional High School Building Committee.
I'm going to second that. Got you, Amy. But I see Joe's hand. Go ahead, Joe. Kick off the discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Not so much a discussion, but an explanation. This is something that came up at our Subcommittee meeting last week, and it was something I didn't really think about, but for those who aren't initiated, it's something that they probably should know. So this is going to be a long process, this build project for the district. And it is assumed, and it's already become fruition, that we will lose members of our committee as this arduous task moves along. So one of the things that came up at our meeting was that they were asking about the inclusion of the suggestion that these two new members be made part of the committee. Somebody said, well, is this going to change in our, I think you called it our charter? And I have to explain, no. What we're basically doing, and what we have done since we began this process was that when there is a member who has to leave our committee for whatever reason, what we've been doing is, and I hope we will continue to do this, is we are replacing those members with what I call like-kind members. So if the member was a voting member from Lancaster, we replace that individual with a voting member from Lancaster. If that individual who left is a non-voting district employee, we replace it, obviously, with a district employee. So just to put that out there for the public, the two individuals here are actually like-kind replacements. The individual from Stowe, Ms. Kendall, she's replacing a Stowe resident who stepped away from the committee. Mr. McCarthy, he's replacing a district employee who left the employ of the district. So just as an explanation for anybody who cares, which I'm sure there's only about three people in the district that can't think about that. But anyway, that's the explanation, Madam Chair. Thank you.
If anybody has any questions about the qualifications of these individuals or wants that repeated, feel free to ask. But if there's no other discussion, we'll move to the vote. Right, Joe?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And Brett?
Yes.
Motion passes. Welcome to our new members of the School Building Committee. So now we're going to move over to Business and Operations Report, and I perhaps will give it over to you, Kirk, or directly to Pat? Okay, go for it, Pat.
Sophia. So, Alida, can you share that? Or would you like me to?
Whatever you prefer.
Can you share it for me? I'm working off of two screens here, and sometimes I have a problem with that.
Stay with me for a second.
Sure. Just to move things along, this is the results of operations for the month of January. I know it seems like it's in the rearview mirror, but February should be completed probably in the next week or so. As you can see, things are starting to pan out across the budget. There are some major changes that I brought to light, and that would be the first item is the insurance and benefits. You can see that there's a surplus in that category in our budget. And it's because of the health insurance. Our Blue Cross broker, Maya, had a no charge for the month of September. I didn't bring forward this change until I knew exactly how it was going to pan out in the budget because of the pandemic. We anticipated having a lot more people jump onto our plans, you know, being that we're, you know, we would, one or two members of a family would have to make a choice as to where they were going to get their health insurance. So anyway, this surplus is strictly due to what we would call a holiday for the month of September. And this was also, there was no cost for health insurance for the month of September for the employees either. Some other things, as you can see, substitute teachers, even though we have had difficulty with, you know, finding substitutes, it still seems to be an issue when we have to hire long-term subs for, you know, to fill for, you know, maternity leaves, extended leave for illness, whatever the issue may be. So I didn't expect that to go into the negative this year like it has, but right now, this is what I'm projecting. Also, I skipped over facilities. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that. It seems like the heating costs are really trying, are really starting to affect our budget. Heating and electricity, our projections are way up. And some of the costs of some of our materials for repairs, routine repairs and services have gone up as well. Next item would be special ed. You can see, it looks like there's a significant amount of money in that line. This may still change a little bit. We're still, you know, working to see. Some students may or may not have a different route for their education, especially as far as out-of-district placements. And if that's the case, we need to maybe to place them, and this number could go down. We wouldn't have as much of a surplus. But right now, I'm anticipating that the out-of-district should, you know, maintain this particular level. And also, another factor in this is late staffing. We had some difficulty staffing aides in the classrooms, teachers. So people came on board a little bit later into the year. And that too, we had some cost savings in that regards. The number four item here, which I marked it on a couple of the schools, Luther Burbank, Mary Rollinson, there was some unanticipated grant funding that came in this year that we were allowed to cover some salaries, which we did. And that's about it. So right now, it looks like we may come into the year end about eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, maybe about nine-hundred thousand, depending on how other things go. And, you know, and I want to show you comparison to last year as well. If you can scroll down just a little bit more. Again, this was a totally different time and place with the pandemic. I don't see that there is much comparison, but I think we were about in the same place last year dollar-wise. Does anybody have any questions?
Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could tell me, on the warrants, I noticed that there was a line item for new construction. Where does that fall? What line item would that fall on in this summary? And what would new construction be for right now?
For new construction, that would be, you're talking about the building project and costs.
Is that what that is?
That is.
Okay.
That is, and that wouldn't be part of, this is our operating budget. That comes out of a different fund in our accounting system. So you get a report out on that through the Building Committee. Do you have any questions in regards to that?
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Pat, just out of curiosity, why is it the Blue Cross gave that health insurance holiday, and was it just a Blue Cross/Blue Shield thing?
No, it was a Maya. No, it was a Maya thing. Maya brokers are Blue Cross Insurance, but during the pandemic, people didn't see their doctors. But yet, we continued to pay premium. So, I mean, it's a good thing and a bad thing when people don't go to see their doctors, but they didn't have people going to routine physicals and, you know, just routines. Surgeries weren't happening, so the costs were way down. So that was one of the choices that they made was to give all of the districts that are a member of the Maya group to, you know, give them a holiday month. And we could pick the month, and it made sense for us because our health insurance runs September 1st to August 31st. So that's why we chose that.
It just seems so strangely generous to me, highly suspect even, but I'm happy for it.
Well, not really, because not, not everybody, everybody can get into the Maya group. They're if you were a district where you had a lot of illness and chances are they wouldn't let you, well, shouldn't say they wouldn't let you, but it's my understanding that it wouldn't be as easy to get into that group. You have to be accepted by the group to get into it. But if they do have reasonable costs, and that's why we stayed with them.
Great choice.
And great programs for employees too, health, you know, promoting good health habits, so.
Great. Okay, Rich?
Not to drill too much down on the healthcare, but just curious, aren't we part of some sort of co-op or you know, regionally here with a bunch of schools or something to purchase different things? Is this similar to that, or is this just a broker?
This is health, health insurance, property. I think that's all, yeah, liability insurance. It's all included. They offer programs and all of those. But it's not, are you talking about the ACABET Collaborative that we belong to? For tuitions and transportation, and they have a purchasing collaborative that we participated in the past. But that's very different. That's, that's a collaborative where this Maya is a statewide organization. And it's strictly insurance.
Thank you. Sorry to drag you into the weeds. Appreciate it.
That's okay.
All right, looks like I don't see any other hands, unless I'm missing it. All right, maybe we can.
Hey, Leah, what do you think? Just wanted to, just wanted to thank Ms. Maroni for offering the year-over-year comparison. I'm the one that has been asking for that, so much appreciated.
No problem, Rich.
All right, I think that was it for you, right, Pat?
I think so, unless you want some information on the E and D recertification, I'm available.
Don't we have to take a vote on that tonight? It was on the agenda.
Yes, we do.
Ew, okay, so.
Mike's shaking his head. He's ready. He's locked and loaded.
Yeah. Shall we go with the motion first, do you think, Pat?
I would say so.
Okay, so Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, I move to reaffirm the use of one million, two hundred thousand dollars from E and D as a revenue source for the FY23 budget as voted and approved by the school committee on the March 9, 2022 meeting.
I'll second that. What discussion or questions do we have? Go ahead, Joe.
Not a discussion. Would Mr. Horish be so kind as to reread that motion? I didn't quite get it all.
Sure. Move to reaffirm the use of one million, two hundred thousand dollars from E and D as a revenue source for the FY23 budget as voted and approved by the school committee on the March 9, 2022 meeting.
Go ahead, Rich.
Love that practice of you posting that in the chat, Leah. I like to read it, so I appreciate that. That number hasn't changed, right, Ms. Maroni?
No, it has not.
Okay, they were just slow to, for whatever reason, COVID probably, to getting that recertified. And, okay, so as a revenue source, that's the same amount we were going to use from the, from E and D, correct? That hasn't changed either?
Nothing has changed.
Okay.
Fortunately. Go ahead, Mike.
Pat, I'm sorry, I know that we've discussed this, but what is our balance now in E and D?
We certified one million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars. We certified that, what they certified for us, three on three eleven. So.
Okay, thank you.
That's why we're doing this.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Sharon?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
Think I got everybody? Motion passes. All right, everybody, so we're gonna keep rolling on. Thank you so much, Pat. Let's see here. We are lucky now to hear from our student representatives, so I'm going to hand it over to Sonia, Dan, in whatever order you see fit.
Sorry, I was having some trouble unmuteing, but Dan, do you want to, as tradition, start us off? Yeah? Did we lose you, Dan? Okay, I'll start then.
Good timing. Go ahead.
So a few updates. Two and a half weeks ago, our Robotics Alliance went to a competition, made a semifinals, so go to them. They have another competition this weekend. Yes, and this weekend, awesome, yeah, Chicago went incredibly well. I got myself out there twice because it was so good. Some really spectacular talent and a great turnout on all three performances. And let's see, next Tuesday, there is a concert band and jazz band concert. So that is exciting. For sports, we had the start of spring sports coming, but Dan can elaborate that on that, when, if he fixes his mic. Then for Student Council, we're working on planning a lip dub, which is a fun annual tradition, or bi-annual yeah, tradition that we, oh, awesome, we haven't been able to do for the last few years because of COVID, but it's underway, so that's really exciting. And it always brings the community together. And then the Green Team is planning our Earth Day celebration too, so we'll have a afternoon of activities before April break, and that will be exciting. And then we, the Student Council and our Triumph Program have combined forces and we're working on a talent show that will be in, I believe, May 6th. And so that is also exciting, a lot of fun things happening. And then an update on the student environment, there's some sleepy people because of the time change, but that's kind of the expected. And then there's a little less excitement, but it's still joyful seeing everyone's face, having the mandate lifted, and there's a few like little colds and sniffles going around with that, but that's the expected. Generally, things are going well. Dan, do you want to elaborate on sports or anything else?
Yeah, sure. Hopefully I fix my mic. Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Nice. Okay, sorry about that from before. So basically, I don't know if I missed anything you said, but did you talk about sports yet, like the lacrosse? Okay, so tryouts for lacrosse, softball, baseball, tennis, they're all coming up. They're all about to end, sorry. So we're about to roll into, you know, the whole sport scene. That'll be exciting. MCAS happened for the sophomores and the I think it was just the sophomores for today and yesterday. So classes were a little bit different. Some rooms were moved. I know my German room was moved to a different room for the day. That's about it, I think.
And then also the outdoor track has started too, which is also exciting.
What is, Sonia, can you elaborate? What is that?
Outdoor track, at track and field?
Oh, track and field.
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, lately, they've been doing it indoors in the hallway.
Yes, that was our indoor season, but.
It's definitely very interesting after school to see people sprinting down the hallway.
Yeah, you've got to watch out, keep your wits about.
I have a question for you guys, and maybe, you know, this is probably just a question Momme should ask our athletic director, but I also understand that the middle school kids are invited to join some of these programs, but that the track, do the track programs happen at the high school that you see these younger kids come up?
In my experience, we haven't had any.
Now, maybe it just happens at the middle schools.
Yeah, on the team, during the cross-country season, we had one day where some Hail students, or actually, yeah, from all towns, came in, did, ran a practice with us.
Yeah, it's great, because.
It happens for outdoor as well later in the season.
Yeah, the athletics kind of extends down into the middle schools, which is really great.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Kirk.
I was just going to clarify, MIA does allow that when your high school doesn't have enough athletes to fill a team. So middle school athletes do, like in small towns like St. Millis, it's common for eighth graders to come up and play in the high school athletics, so they can field teams to compete against their league teams.
Got it. Rich, did you have a question for student reps?
Not a question, more of a comment. I got to actually see Sonia's dad at the play, the Chicago play, and I just wanted to compliment the people that were in the play. I don't know why I was surprised that it was so entertaining, because I'd seen.
It was phenomenal, yeah.
It just, I just haven't been for a long time, I guess, probably because there was a pandemic now that I think about it. But it was just, it was really exceeded my expectations. It was really, really wonderfully done. The music was amazing, the acting was great. Production was great, so just kudos to all those folks.
Thanks, Rich. Any other questions for Sonia or Dan?
I have one more comment, and it's just some more general excitement about college decisions are coming out for our regular admission, and so that's an exciting scene happening. I'm sure their next meeting, there'll be more updates on that as we fill up our little mural in the guidance hallway.
That's awesome.
That actually reminds me, I have one more thing to add. Of the, my class, the juniors, in our guidance seminars, we're currently looking into college stuff, and we're getting prepared for college. So we're looking at like what schools we want to attend, what we think might be a good fit for us as far as what type of college and stuff like that goes. So it's a, it's a process. We're getting through it.
Awesome. Well, thanks, guys. Really appreciate you weighing in and helping us understand what's going on.
Yes, of course. It's a joy.
All right, guys, so we're going to move on to unfinished business now, and the first item in unfinished business is the administrative salary range vote, and I believe Mr. Horish has a motion for us.
Yes, I move to approve the administrative salary ranges as presented.
And I will second that. Do we have any discussion on this, which we presented at the last meeting? Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, could you just clarify for me, the title of the document says draft salary ranges and FY222 actual salaries? Is that confused me because we're voting to approve salary ranges, but they're becoming, how does it tie into actual salaries?
Go ahead, Kirk. Do you want to take that one?
I will. I, I, I think it's a simple typo, Ms. Cohen. I, I think it was just a matter of there, you know, in the analysis, I'm working with Ms. Stoica on this, I asked her for two separate things, and she just combined them in a document.
That makes sense.
So my apologies for missing that on the document.
That's okay. I just was trying to make sure we're looking at the right thing.
Go ahead, Rich.
Forgive me if this was said already, I was just looking at the the draft salary ranges document from last meeting, and it says in italics, next to Business and Operations per superintendent, is that just indicating that, I know you'd made a recommendation for a different salary range, and then I assume that's the same for the high school principal, because we voted to change that range during the search. Is that what that's referring to, Kirk?
That is referring to that. I made that recommendation, Mr. Eckle, knowing with Ms. Maroni's retirement, I engaged with some leaders, retired superintendents around those salary ranges, and we weren't, we need to be more competitive in the marketplace. So that is a marketplace adjustment.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you.
So as per the superintendent's findings from the entry plan, we're going to be seemingly casting a brighter spotlight on our district curriculum and developing ways to align it as, as you said, Kirk, both vertically and horizontally. And that seems like a growing role, and a role that will take more of a centerpiece position in the district in the next several years, which, which I, I agree with. I noticed that the salary range for our curriculum director has a ceiling that's actually lower than that of our athletic director, realizing that on this document, those two positions are in different silos. I wonder if we could consider amending the draft so that the ceiling of those two positions match each other, which in my opinion would be more aligned with our values.
Go ahead, Kirk.
Forgive me. Mr. Huresh, I, I hear that. May I offer a different recommendation? That is a position that is currently vacant. Upon moving forward and filling that position, I think it would be appropriate to address that at that time. Because I want to honor the strategic planning process as we look at doing some reorganization in terms of our leadership positions. There could be impact there, so I wouldn't want us to have to redo something again, you know, do it twice or walk that over. So I might suggest we walk through the strategic planning process, we understand what that is, and then make motions accordingly at that time. But this curriculum director position is a position that currently is not filled. We have two curriculum leads, but they are unit A positions. There is no, and then the STEM director position that we have right now is unfilled.
So just as a follow-up, does that mean that you said, you know, we can address this when it, when it comes up? But, but to be clear, that means that our, the ceiling for that position remains as it's listed on the document then?
Yes, and it is a different job responsibility. I wouldn't let the word director equate to job responsibility as well. So if we were going to make amendments to those, I would frankly take this back to Ms. Stoica to do a market analysis on that as a better metric, because there's other things that we need to do in terms of pay equity that we have to assure we're setting those numbers forward. So I think to do that arbitrarily at the moment, based on the title, is what would lead us to putting in a pay range that may reflect a bias as opposed to a market condition.
I'd like to throw it over to Mary as a member of the Personnel Subcommittee. Thank you. I'm mute, Mary.
I tried to get off it. Okay, so we did look at this, and if you note, the only, we didn't go away from what Anne Marie in her research had figured out. But in places which we've already addressed here at the meeting, where a school committee, we set the salary range for the high school principal. Our superintendent, Kirk, made a recommendation in terms of the finances. But see, I have, I have a lot of difficulty, Mike, with comparing. But see, I have, I have a lot of difficulty, Mike, with um comparing. You you talked about two different silos, um but it's, it's, it's a lot more than that. And two very different areas. Um, and to compare to say one, you know, they're just so different that they're, we're talking apples and oranges. Um, athletics, um you you know, when you think of how many students are involved with athletics and you think of the responsibilities for athletics and the budget, et cetera. It's not just our district, but other districts. That's, that is um, it it it's, it's, it should be well-paid. And I'm separating this from from person who's there, um because we don't just have a great athletic director. We have a superstar. So I'm separating that and not thinking about that, but being consistent. Um, I also feel that the model we have for a curriculum director might very well change. I think about um models that I'm familiar with, especially in Hudson. And whereas the, at the beginning, there was one curriculum director. Um, in terms of expertise, as as that model developed, uh there was a curriculum director for for most of the disciplines, some combined, let's say math and science, um, English and social studies. But I would not be um in favor of increasing that salary when we might be talking about not just one curriculum director, but it could be as the model is changing, that we'd have more than one. We also have um an incredible assistant superintendent who leads, you know, teaching and learning and does a lot in terms of the curriculum. Now, I'm not trying to deny anyone um a salary as a curriculum director. Um, I was a curriculum director. And um but what happened once you had other curriculum directors coming, come in? That is, those are all apples in a sense, where I I believe that athletics and and curriculum, apples and orange. So if we had more curriculum directors, I think in terms of parity and justice, that they should be, you know, on the same scale. So for those reasons, um I I feel strongly that we should just leave it how it is. If it turns out that, see, we're only setting a range, um but certainly as um as the hiring goes on and our superintendent looks at this, he could come back to us and say, really think we do need to extend the range. And that would, that would be something, but on the, on the premise of comparing um and just raising the ceiling for the reasons I've given, I'm really not in favor of that.
Okay, thanks, Mary. I see Amy's hand maybe? Oh, it's down.
Uh, well, I had it up, I took it down, but I'm, I can just offer my two cents. I I tend to agree with Mike's um. When I looked at the the summary the first time, I kind of drew a similar conclusion um as Mike. But I think I also misunderstood where the ranges were coming from originally. Um, and I think I can see both sides of this coin, but you know, on its face, to me, it seems that the salaries do are a reflection of our values as a school system. And so um I I think it, when we talk about putting things into silos, it's, it was also confusing to me to have the athletic director listed under building administration, um because it seemed to be more of a seemed to me that it's treated them as more than a building position in our district. So um it's hard not to draw comparisons to the salary ranges when they're presented on the same page and then draw conclusions from that. So I would be in favor of of adjusting the range.
I would just like to say really quickly that these ranges are comparative to the, to the other districts that we um are with. And so it it feels to me like it would almost be artificial, artificially raising it because it would, it would jump out of step with the the ranges that Emery found. And so I don't know about that. Go ahead, Kirk.
Yeah, I just, I would caution the committee of making any kind of move like that. Um, and I'll take it back to the Pay Equity Act that was passed in recent years. There's been a lot of work across the state around the Pay Equity Act to make sure it's fair pay for the job. Um, and shifting off of that based off the recommendation of your human resources director, she's the one that does all the depth and work around that. Um, so you have to, you gotta look at pay equity, uh both in terms of how you're paid relative to maybe your demographics, but also the work that you do. And that's where job comparables come in are important. So this recommendation has come forth based on the recommendation of Emery Stoica and the committee. Uh, and to shift that arbitrarily takes it off the numbers without having the data around what what the those comparables on pay equity statements are. So I think we could actually, if if that was a practice we instituted, we could work ourselves into trouble in terms of setting those pay rates in that way, having not consulted um those fair comparables and the Pay Equity Act.
Alright guys, so not seeing any more hands. I think we are perhaps ready for the vote to approve this as presented. So I am gonna vote first. I vote yes. I go to Mary.
Yes.
Joe?
No.
Rich?
Yes.
Uh, Mike?
I'm staying.
Amy?
Uh, I'll abstain as well.
Sharon?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Sean?
Abstain.
Think I got everybody, but I'm not sure. Okay, so Alita, would you mind giving us a final count? An official count? Brett, did I get you? I did. Okay, thank you.
Six yeses, one no, three abstentions.
Okay. So the motion passes. Alright, thanks, everybody. Alright, our next matter of unfinished business is the policy manual section D. This is our second reading and we are looking to take a vote on this tonight. And Mike, if you wouldn't mind uh putting forth the motion.
Move to approve the revisions to section D of the Nishoba Regional School District Policy Manual as presented.
I'll second that. Karen, do you want? Oh, okay, Joe, question?
Madam Chair, if you want to, if uh Ms. Divine, you wanna have Ms. Divine speak first, I'll happy to hold off on my question at this point.
Okay, great. Maybe she'll answer it for you. Karen, do you wanna share with the committee, there was one discrepancy that we found in the first reading, the policy subcommittee met. Do you wanna fill everybody in on the change?
Uh, yes, so under filed DBC, the budget deadlines and schedules, we talked about this um a couple of meetings ago when we had the first reading. Um, where it said the selectmen have authority to impose a date as early as December thirty-first. Um, and Mary. With getting the information on this and the clarification. So we um deleted that, well, our proposal is to delete that sentence. That's the only change from the first reading. Um, the the first viewing that we had uh two meetings ago, so the only change since then is that we've um struck that sentence. The other sentence above that, whatever dates are assigned, the final date for the submission of the budget to the selectmen will be arranged cooperatively with the school committee and finance committee. Uh, we left that in as that is, you know, the the spirit and how, in how we approach this. But the second sentence with the date of December thirty-first we struck is that does not apply to us. Leah, anything you wanna add?
No, that was great. Thanks, Karen. Joe, did that help? Or do you, go ahead?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um when we, when the first reading, I I posed a question and I I actually have quite a number of questions about this, but the, the draft that we received has the the changes tracked in it, both in red and green, which indicates to me in my experience that two individuals, two different individuals have edited this document. So can you explain, was, am I wrong in that assumption? Who's red, who's green?
Oh, I'm gonna answer. So it is my understanding. Oh, no, I'm I'm gonna speak out of turn. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, then let me ask another question then. I I've looked through this thing and from a crafting, I what it appears to be is that originally it looks as if this policy was basically adopted uh in its boilerplate form from MASC. And that there weren't really laid a lot of adjustments over the time period after which it's been adopted. So now the policy subcommittee is taking a look at this, and and well, they should take a look at this. But from a crafting standpoint, there is significantly more inconsistencies than just the provision under filed uh policy DBC regarding the selectmen and their authority. For example, uh it refers in policy DB dash one to a policy, to me, finance policy subcommittee. I'm not aware of the existence of a finance policy subcommittee for this district. Do we have a finance policy subcommittee? Because the manner in which the policy is written, it says that the finance policy subcommittee in conjunction with the superintendent then presents the proposed budgets to our local communities. So it is, is the finance policy subcommittee referring to our budget and warrant subcommittee? Is that, is that, is that what that is?
I would not assume so. Uh, can you tell me what page you're on though, Joe? Are the pa, I don't even think the pages are numbered. DB one.
DB, DB dash one.
I think that it's probably the equivalent of our budget and warrant subcommittee.
Okay, and and let me just stop you right there. It can't be probably. It has to be certain. You can't say, you can't say, oh, well, that's our budget wine subcommittee, because if it's a budget wide subcommittee, the policy should say that. And this is just the tip of the iceberg in the inconsistencies you go through this. Many spots in this policy, we refer to the district as the district. Other parts of the policy refer to the district as the school department. Some places it refers to the district committee, some places it refers to the regional school district committee, some places it just refers to it as the committee. There was another example where it talked about uh approval of transfers. Approval of transfers must be done by the full committee. What does the full committee mean? Does that mean that every single member of the committee must be in attendance to approve a transfer? I I I think from a crafting standpoint, and and it goes back to something I learned even before I got to law school. When you have a legal document, I know this is not a legal document, but it is a quasi-legal document. The most important fundamental rule of crafting is consistency. You sign up and say, we are the Nishoba Regional School District, open parents, quote, here in Africa, excuse me, here in Africa, quote, the district, close quote. So everywhere you see in the, in the policy, the word district, we know that means the Nishoba Regional School District. One of the other things in this policy is that many spots you have the district capitalized, other places you don't have it capitalized. Same with the superintendent. It says the superintendent, capital S, other place it says small s. Now, I know that most people will look at this and listen to me that these are just miniscule little issues, but they're really not. Because in, from a legal standpoint, you look at somebody that says the superintendent, that refers to the superintendent of the district, Kirk Downing. When you look at the term small lowercase s, superintendent gonna be a superintendent or a district in that regard. It it it, this, there's another area which is, where it talks about it under policy DBG, cost centers and cost centers level. I don't know any, does anybody know what a cost center level is? There's no definition provision in the policy. I don't know what that means. It also, under DBG, talks about the bottom line. I I don't know if bottom line is a generally accepted accounting terminology. It always struck me as an idiomatic expression. Oh, the bottom line is this. I'm looking at this, do you mean the bottom line, the actual bottom of the page? Are you talking about the idiomatic expression bottom line? Yeah, I'm.
So, so what I think I hear you saying, Joe, is we need a third reading.
I I was gonna say, no, I I wanna be, no, this is, the the substance of what's being changed here is 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 not in question. I just think if you, if you look at this and, you know, you find one inconsistency, you know, if if the document was ever put up to scrutiny, and if you find one inconsistency, say, well, I found one, where are the others? And you just hammer away and hammer away, and it completely breaks up the foundation of whatever you put together. So I guess, Madam Chairman, yeah, you probably wanna go back and look at it the third time and have a consistent form of language throughout this policy. Consistent capitalizations, consistent use of terminology, removal of idiomatic expressions, definitions of those terms. Like, again, cost centers. What is a cost center? I don't know what that means.
Centers, I, that one I do know. That's the, that's the bolded items in the budget document. Those are the cost centers. But there, you're right, there are other things that are problematic. So, I mean, this is model policy from MASC. We are, none of us, I don't think, besides Pat, are economists. And I don't actually feel comfortable doctoring the financial policy without MASC guidance, so.
Then def, define for me, I'm just gonna be on a change, define for me what the full committee means as opposed to the district.
Right, like those are, those are problems. So I don't know why, I don't know why MASC has um you know, put out to every single school district in the state, a policy that has what Joe Gleason perceives as multiple flaws that I can hear him. I can hear him say that right now, and I agree.
I I don't wanna, I don't wanna indict the MASC. I think what they put out there is basically boilerplate language. And it's really up to us to go in there and craft it to our needs. I think it's been done in part. I don't think it's been done in whole, because again, there, there are portions of this policy that talk about the school department. I, in three years of this committee, I've never heard anybody refer to our district as the school department.
But I think that, Joe, we, we actually have a general policy on the policy subcommittee that when there is a model policy, we should actually veer from it very little or as little as possible. So.
I I would suggest, Madam Chair, that's a horrifically bad policy. These policies are our, our policies, but you know, you, you've made this point in the past, Madam Chairman. We go back to your, the, the um, the public uh comment policy. And you had said at that time that, you know, you wouldn't wanna veer away from that because, you know, this had been, been scrutinized by legal counsel for MASC. Fair enough. And my response to that would be, who was it? Who was the attorney that looked at it? Was it Steve Finnegan, general counsel for the MASC? Was it one of his associates? Did they farm it out? You know, again, that's why I think that having this, when you say, it comes from MASC, it's not sacrosanct, and I think this is a perfect example of this.
But Joe, do you think that you would be willing to comb through it? Because budget and warrant, I gave it to Steve and he gave it two thumbs up.
Okay.
Um, and and so do you want, and Karen and I don't feel like we have the expertise to go out on this limb. Do you think that this is something that you would wanna comb through?
If if the committee wants to table this and you want me to just take the blue line to it, because it's already red and green. I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna change any of the substance of it. I, that's not the issue here.
Right.
It, again, it it's, I come from this from my perspective, you know? I find that one, I mean, there was a famous football player that got off of murder charges because a glove didn't fit. And that's all, that's all, I mean, I'm sorry, but that's, that's the bottom line. When you find that one inconsistency, you just hammer and hammer away at it. And there's way too many inconsistencies in this policy that I I I'm just not comfortable voting in favor of it at this point, so.
Joe, this is why we need you here. Um, I I think Mary has her hand up. What would you like to do, Mary?
Well, I would like to um give some evidence supporting what Joe is talking about. Um, in regard to that one sentence that had to do with December thirty-first, uh, I contacted Dorothy Presson. And she told me that all of the financial um policies had been reviewed by Tracy Novak, who, um, and I think I I referred to her before as Kim Novak, mistake. She's Tracy Novak, and she is, she really is a a financial guru. I've seen her in many workshops, et cetera.
She's the one who presented to us, Mary.
Oh, yes, that's right. Everybody knows. Right, okay. So it took a while um and be, to get back uh to me, which doesn't usually happen with Dorothy. Dorothy couldn't give me an answer, although I had, you know, combed through mass general law, et cetera, looking for this December thirty-first. And it took, it took quite a while. I I I kept um Leah in the, and in the, in the loop with this. Finally, Dorothy got an answer and told me and said, take out that sentence. And I said to her, well, I assume that this is an era in the MASC policy and you'll be putting this out. I said, I've looked and other districts use this exact same. And um and she said, well, and. And, and she said, well, and twice I said this because I said, that's what, that's what I expect. And she said, what, what, what we would say is that individual districts can certainly, in this case, that sentence needed to go because if it had to do with municipalities or something, but it didn't even do that. It was just an error, wrong, no place in the law. And so she said, so we expect local districts to make changes that are more in keeping. So not talking about that one sentence, I'm talking about what Joe is talking about. Now, our work on the regional agreement has, that was part, what Joe is, is expressing is what Christine Lynch and Michelle Griffin at DESI said to us that the language needs to be precise and consistent. And they started things off for us. And, you know, the regional committee is referred to as the committee, the, et cetera. And that had to be through the whole, you know, through the whole document, which we have done. And I'm sure that if there are any places that we didn't, that, that Joe's gonna be able to tell us about that. But this does make sense and I think that we can let go a little bit because I remember when Joe talked about, you know, MASC isn't perfect. And I, I thought, well, MASC is MASC. But what I just saw and what Dorothy Presser said to me made me feel as though, ooh, they're human after all. And, and so I think it just makes sense to, to the good work that, that the policy subcommittee has done. And then let's just make it, let's make it consistent. Let's make it as perfect as it can be. So that's my, that's my two cents.
Thanks, Mary. Go ahead, Rich.
I have a suggestion. Can you give it back to the budget and warrant committee to review again? And send it, and we'll send it back to you and perhaps we can consult with Mr. Gleason.
I think if I get a motion to table this to the next meeting, I'm gonna give it to all of you.
I'll move to table that, Madam Chairman.
I second, I second it.
I seconded it.
No!
We need to vote on the tabling. Yeah, Joe?
Yeah, on the motion, Madam Chairman. Again, I, I want to just impress upon you and Ms. Devine, this is no reflection on the change of the substantive changes that you're looking to make to the, to the, to the policy. I think that they're all warranted. I think you and Ms. Devine have done an excellent job. Again, my only issue is, as Dr. McCarthy said, it's precise and consistency. I mean, we make a decision. What do we call ascending communities? Are they communities? Are they municipalities? Are they towns? I see it as communities in the policy. I see it as municipalities in the town. So I, I want to be clear that I'm moving to table it only to do a little punch list on this and not make any substantive changes. I think what you guys have done is Yomans work. Thank you.
Yeah, Karen.
Oh, I, I just wanted to say, Mr. Gleason, I would be all in favor of you reviewing it with your eye. I certainly would not feel, I feel as Leah does, I would not want to take that on myself. I don't think I would, I would do as thorough a job. So if we're gonna have everybody look at it, whatever needs to happen is totally, totally fine with me. Appreciate the help.
All right, so, um, to, let's vote on the motion to table. I vote yes. Karen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna table this until next time and Joe will take his fine tooth comb. Thanks, Joe, for being willing to do that. I know you're busy.
No, my pleasure, Madam Chairman. I will be happy to forward you a fee agreement for these services right after the meeting. Okay, you're laughing. Good, good. I'm glad you're laughing because I'm just being jocular. Thank you. I'll be happy to do it. Thank you.
That's why you're great here. All right, guys, it is, it is nine o'clock. I recognize that. But we just have a few subcommittee reports to go. Can I have a thumbs up if you guys? Or a thumbs down if you don't want to, right, like, thumbs up, I'm okay to continue? Or thumbs down, get me out of here. Everybody's okay? All right, we're gonna power through this because we have some amazing subcommittee reports. And it's gonna start with budget and warrant. Do we have a report, guys?
As a secretary, standing in for for Mr. Rubenstein, who couldn't be here tonight, we did not meet. We're scheduling another meeting for next month. Pat did her duty, circulated the documents. We did not get the opportunity to review it, but we hope in our next meeting, which we still have to set the agenda to talk about the next operating report, this past one, and review, feedback, do like a debrief on the budget process.
Awesome. Thanks, Rich. And communication, you have a great report for us. Go for it, Amy.
All right, guys, bear with me. I know that it's been a long meeting and we've already listened to a very thorough presentation from the superintendent, but this is meant to augment and build off of Superintendent Downing's communication goals. So let me share my screen here. Let me see if I can get technology to work for me. This slide deck is in the meeting materials, so I'm going to breeze through this stuff very quickly because I didn't want to put off sharing out the results of our survey that the communications subcommittee sent out in February. We sent out the survey to seek feedback from parents on district communication, which had previously been identified as an area for improvement by the communications subcommittee. And we felt that in order to move forward, we really needed data and actionable items that we could give to the superintendent for, to inform his district communication goals. So our questions were really focused on about six themes here. How well were the current district communication strategies working? Was information on the website useful and easily accessible? What other sources were people using to find information about the school committee and the district? Were parents finding the information that they wanted and that they needed? What suggestions they might have for us when the website refresh is underway? And where should this communications subcommittee really be focusing their time and energy? Survey was sent on February 10th. We got 330 responses representing Bolton, Lancaster, and Stowe. Each of our schools had parents submitting responses and we did ask for one survey per family, so there is some overlap here among the schools. We asked what, we wanted to know how people were seeking out information and you can see that they're using a wide variety of methods, but not YouTube that much. The website, though, was a widely used tool, as was social media. The big takeaway from this question in terms of what types of information and how often people are using the website was that people are using it to look for event-related calendar issues or items, teacher emails, and not so much for Twitter feeds or the high school building project or PTOs, membership information. This also demonstrates that the website is a widely used tool. And forgive me if I'm speeding through these, but if you want to look at these in more depth, you can just check the meeting materials, but I am trying to keep us moving quickly so that we can all get out of here before too much longer. One of the main things we wanted to find from the survey was what parents were interested in having us focus our communication goals on. And you can see here that website improvement, subscription to a digital calendar, and an app for communicating urgent school matters were of interest. We asked parents, if there was one thing missing from the website that we could add that would be useful for it to them, what would it be? And we got some of the central themes are listed here. Better search engine, improved user interface, digital calendars with subscribe function. Info and timeline on the high school building project is, is one that was a common theme. Then we kind of switched topics into district communications and asked for some feedback on whether they were clear, concise, readable, understandable, timely, and easily accessible. And this slide shows that the answer was overwhelmingly that they were, yes. We asked about preferred frequencies of email communications and found that people are satisfied with receiving a weekly email. And we also wanted to get some feedback on what types of communication were most useful. This is showing that emails are preferred. The Twitter account is not being utilized or being followed as, as much as we had hoped. And people may be interested in receiving texts to, for, for certain things that we'll go into more on another slide. We also asked parents whether they would have any interest in subscribing to a listserv to receive school committee agendas and meeting materials and found out that the majority are in support of this idea. We also asked them if there was any interest in receiving updates via text on some of the topics listed below and, and it does appear that there's interest in getting texts on school or district-related communications. We asked, were there any district topics that you wish you knew more about? And found out that people do want to know more about district improvement plans, college application process, calendars, transition to high school, extracurriculars, supports for students with special needs, high school building project. And one parent even said, we need to know about everything. Assume we know nothing. I included that because I thought it was a really good point. We also asked, is there anything you wished was included in the district updates, but it's not? And we got a similar list of topics. You can see the high school building project is listed there again, calendar-related things, curriculum highlights, staffing, and student and teacher celebrations, not just sport achievements. So, in summary, I wanted to give you guys some takeaways for the school committee and then I'm going, my final slide will be recommendations for the superintendent. The first big takeaway that we, we really didn't know going into this was how useful is the website for parents now and how much is it being used? And what we found out that is, is that it is a useful tool, but it needs a refresh, which is already being planned by the superintendent and is underway. It needs a more intuitive format, better search function, and we need to make information more easily accessible. Respondents were happy with the weekly emails coming from the superintendent in the central office. But there were, there was a central theme that a more balanced update on the student and teacher accomplishments, community events, and extracurriculars other than sports would be helpful. The last takeaway for the school committee is that our meeting materials and agendas and basic happenings are not easy to find for most people who responded to the survey anyway. And that creating a listserv, email subscription service, attaching agendas and meeting minutes would, would make this information easier to find and would increase transparency. And respondents seemed interested in this idea. The majority of them were in favor of, of this offering. So that is something that we will be doing some more work on. Final slide is recommendations for the superintendent. And you'll see that these have already been incorporated into superintendent's strategic planning process and his entry plan. And I really want to take this moment to thank Superintendent Downing for collaborating with us from the beginning on this whole process and allowing us the opportunity to draft the survey and send it out and, and work with him on, on what we could do with the results. It was, it was really refreshing and it was a great opportunity to, to work together. So he's already said this in his presentation, but the four things that came out of our survey is, is website improvement is needed and it's in progress. A dedicated website for the high school building project is also needed and that's also in progress and should be launched for, in time for the first public forum of the building project later this month. Subscription function and just really kind of improved, more robust digital calendars would be valued by parents. And I know it was already included as something that will be investigated as part of Superintendent Downing's strategic planning process and as, same with texting parents with urgent school-related communications. And really, all of this just goes to help build trust and partnership with parents because when, when that is there, then our students only stand to benefit. So. Any questions? Comments?
That was great, Amy. Thank you. Go ahead, Rich.
Just want to say, wow, that was awesome. You know, a lot of this I, I had thought of, but it's organized. You got the data to back it up. Glad to hear most of it's already in process. So just another great update. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, the communication subcommittee. Very cool. Any other questions?
Trying to figure out how to stop sharing. Oh, there we go.
All right.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for listening. I know.
Thank you so much. Yeah, and like you said, Kirk is, is gonna be using this as a data point, another data point in the strategic planning. So that's great. Thanks so much, Kirk and Amy and the subcommittee. So over to the high school building committee, the school building committee.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Sorry to interrupt you there. I have a very brief report. Since this is our second meeting this month in the district, excuse me, the building committee has already met once this month. There's really not much more I can report to you that has been reported at the last meeting and what we did this evening is regarding the appointment of the two new members. The one thing I do want to, I actually want to make two sort of administrative announcements in regards to the building committee. One is that, again, I'll echo what Ms. Cohen just said. We are having our first public informational forum next Wednesday, 6:00 PM at the high school auditorium. This is an informal gathering of the building committee and the public. We are not posting this as a meeting. I'm saying this for the members who are at the meeting. I'm saying this for ministerial purposes. We're not posting this. This will be an informal gathering for questions regarding and presentations regarding the initial steps in the building project. The second administrative announcement I want to make is that what we're going to be doing, we've actually already started this, but I think at our next meeting on, in April, we will be basically ensconcing the building committee and by extension, the district committee and by further extension to the district, well within the protective wake of our OPM and our architect. From this point forward, a lot of what's going to be happening at our meeting is going to be driven by our OPM and our architect. They're gonna be basically setting the basis, the base agenda for our meetings. They'll be essentially presenting most of the information and they will be assisting in the formulation of any formative votes that we need to take at this point. So at this point, I would say our last meeting was sort of a preseason game. This is gonna be, this is a regular, yeah, he knows what I'm talking about. We're gonna get into the regular season now and this is really where we're gonna hit the ground running and start moving this project forward. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thanks, Joe. For personnel, we are moving forward with the summative evaluation portion of the evaluation cycle. Mary and I are planning that. Kirk, I just wanted to throw this onto your radar that the meeting on April 6th, we have Dorothy Presser scheduled to come give us that summit of evaluation training at 6:00 PM. So that syncs up with your forum.
Is, is Ms. Presser already scheduled for 6?
She is.
So I'll coordinate with, with Mr. Marshall. And if we follow that up, I would just need to know how long Ms. Presser is gonna speak is all.
Okay, so we can touch base on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think if we shifted to like 6:30 or whatever the appropriate time would be, that the team would be fine with that. So.
Great. Okay, great. And that's really it for personnel. Over to policy.
Policy met on Monday and we just had a couple of agenda items. We went over the policy section D to present tonight. And then we have another policy that's had some updates from MASC, but we have some, we need some clarification on it. So we've reached out to Dorothy Presser for that. And I'm working on getting that information from her and we'll present it at another time.
Thanks, Karen. Audit advisory. Any report?
We are still trying to. We are still trying to get a quorum of people together, so hopefully we will have met by the next, um, meeting.
Great. And Dear J?
Um, Dear J, um, continues to meet two times a month on the opposite Wednesdays, um, from the school committee meetings. And, um, they extend an invitation to anyone in the community or on this committee. If you want to join, you're welcome to join at, on any time. Um, they are continuing to work on the subcommittee feedback. Um, and to bring forward some strategies or trainings or other information that will be helpful based on what they're, um, learning from that.
Thanks, Sharon. Amy, did you have a question?
Just, just like a quick question on whether Dear J is, um, needing to recruit other community members and if so, how that happens? Is that open to all or?
Yeah, the meetings are open to all. So if somebody wants to attend the meeting, um, they have their own section on the website. You can get the information there. Um, the agendas are posted with the meeting times, um, and the Zoom link.
Awesome. Thanks, Sharon. Over to the R triple A C.
So the final meeting of the regional agreement amendment advisory committee uh, was last Wednesday, three sixteen. And, uh, I want to publicly thank the members of the R triple A C, Brian Boyle from Bolton, Ellen Sturgis from Stowe, Jen Fletcher from Lancaster, Kathy Kono from Stowe, Lorraine Brumasco from Bolton and from our school committee, um, Leah and Sharon and, and also Steve for the time that he was able to serve. Um, this is, this has been, um, a very, um, comprehensive process. And I, I personally, as the chair of this, I'm very grateful to the talented, dedicated group um, who engaged in this process and contributed to a draft, um, a draft that is better organized, better understandable and, and now conforms to the Mass General Law, to Mass General Law and, and DESI regulations. At this point, I am incorporating, um, any of the recommendations from our last meeting, um, working on the minutes and, and working a little bit on, on format. Um, what, what you'll see, uh, when it comes to school committee is that having looked at other regional agreements and seeing things like a title page with our beautiful, you know, seal on it, um, a table of contents, which really will help with the ease, um, and, and Sharon was, was a person who said like, did you do the table of contents? We now have a table of contents. So as people are looking for specific information in the regional agreement, they'll be able to look in the table of contents. Um, and so, you know, I, I really want to thank the, this particular group of people. Uh, we worked well together. Uh, we didn't have to mute. I mean, we just, nobody would really step on other people. If they did, they'd step right back and, and everybody contributed. And I think I can say that we all learned so much about this, um, regional agreement. And it's not as scary as we all initially thought. And, uh, coming to you, it's in much, much better shape, but all the final decisions in regard to this are yours, um, ours and yours as school committee. So that's it.
Thanks, Mary. So we'll be working on that all next year and we'll bring it to, or hopefully get it on to the three warrants, town warrants at the next, um, spring town meetings. Um, alright.
Leah?
Go ahead.
I just, I want to give a big shout out to Mary because this was a huge lift. It was an enormous job to go through this and update it and, and get all the details together and cross all the Ts and dot all the Is and all of that stuff. It was a really big lift. So, uh, thank you, thank you, thank you to Mary for all of that hard work.
She is superhuman. Thanks, Mary. And our last report goes to CPAC. Is there a report, Brett?
No, no report.
Okie dokie. Alright, guys. So that brings us to our next item and that is items for the next agenda. If you guys don't mind, I'd like to point to our planning calendar and share with you guys that it's pretty full. So I'm hoping that there's nothing that we need to add at this point unless it's pressing and you feel very strongly about it. Is there anything?
We can't see it, Leah.
Oh, you want me to share it? Hold on. I shall do that. Just take me two shakes of a lamb's tail. Okay. So just by virtue of us only giving ourselves one meeting in those school vacation months, uh, we don't have very much time left, believe it or not. We only have, uh, we actually have five meetings left because June fifteenth is our last meeting. So if there's anything that you guys think is missing, I'm definitely open to hearing that. Keeping in mind that we do have a lot to do. And remember, I can't see all of you, so I'm panning through. You can just yell out. Oh, I see Joe's hand. Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, yeah, Leah, just a quick question. And I, I brought this up for, uh, future agenda last time. But I have noticed that the agenda has changed and I just see that we, the A R designation is out, the I O's designation are still in. Um, is that a permanent change moving forward? Are we just going to go to, to keep a vote where we're voting and I O where we're informational or?
Yeah, so I think that it's probably, I think that the spirit of that was to limit debate and to also alert the public if a vote was being taken. And so I feel like the notion of limiting debate, I struggle with that. And I would never want to squelch what people have to say. Um, but I think that it's important that we identify when votes are being taken. And so I, I move more toward that strategy as the chair. And that's where I'm at. What do you think, Joe?
I, I think that the manner in which the agenda is crafted is solely within your discretion, Madam Chairman. And if that's what you wish to do, that's fine. As I said, I was only looking at it from a reliance standpoint, A R, I O, A R, um, I'm assuming we're going to vote, I O, we're not going to vote. But if you're going to, if this is, if that A R, I O is sort of off the table under your tutelage and guidance, then so be it. You can remove that from my wish list from before and we'll just go with what you're doing right now.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. I, I had kind of made that determination because I felt like A R wasn't always a vote. And it was just a bit of a misnomer in my mind. So, yeah, that's where, that's where I'm heading. And that's what you guys can expect for the remainder here. Go ahead, Karen.
Um, do we need to add on another reading for section D? It was on for tonight, but we, we're going to have to come back to it.
Yeah, so you know what? I'm going to throw it out to June. I mean, obviously this is not pressing anymore. In that way, it gives Joe lots of time, many hours to bill us. Any other? Any other questions? It's been a long day, guys, right? Any other questions or things? Okay. Stop that. And it appears we only have one matter left on the agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, Amy said it.
Second.
That's a rich second. I am going to call the roll. Rich?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Joe?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
Alright.